Okay, calling meeting to order. 1.2 Pledge of Allegiance, I want to go ahead and call up to the podium Ms. Nyla, Kanaya, and Navea that will lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance today.
Put your hands over your heart, ready, begin.
I have a pledge of allegiance to the flag of United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you so much ladies. All right, moving on to 1.3 Approval of Agenda. It was moved by Ms. Medina and second by Ms. Alexander.
Aye.
Thank you Dr. Wyatt. Dr. Wyatt is on virtual with us tonight. Mr. Santos? Motion passed. 2.0, 2.1, Hunt Elementary School's Sankofa Performance. At this point, I'm going to go ahead and turn it over to Ms. Mary Rhone Goodwin.
Good evening and thank you President Sabios. My name again is Mary Rhone Goodwin. I'm the Director of Communications and Community Relations. At this time, I'd like to invite our Board and our Executive Cabinet members to proceed to the Reserve Section here in the front. Tonight, I am very proud and excited to be welcoming our Sankofa students from Hunt Elementary School. That's right, let's give them a hand of applause. They are going to be providing a cultural heritage presentation for the Board in honor of Black History Month. Following the presentation, Board members will come forward for a photo opportunity and then the Board will return to the dais. And now, I'd like to invite our Hunt Elementary School students, under the direction of their third grade teacher Angela Curtis, to make their way forward at this time. These students will be singing Lift Every Voice and Sing, better known as the Black National Anthem, written by James Weldon Johnson and composed by his brother J. Rosamond Johnson in 1900. This hymn is a symbol of strength, unity, and resilience for Black and African Americans. It became a powerful anthem during the Civil Rights Movement, and as we are about to see this evening, this inspiration continues for generations to come. At this time, I'd like to invite those of us in the audience to stand, so that our scholars may begin.
(Singing) (Singing) Let every voice and sing to earth and heaven ring. Ring with the harmony of liberty. Let our rejoicing rise high as the listening sky. Let every doubt, loud as the roaring sea. Sing a song full of the faith that the dark past has taught us. Sing a song full of the hope that the present has brought us. Facing the rising sun, our new day begun. Let us march on till victory is won.
While I have the floor, I'd like to tell you a little bit more about our wonderful Sankofa program. Sankofa stands for Students Accumulating New Knowledge, Optimizing Future Accomplishments, and this is a unique magnet program that is culturally responsive and starts in kindergarten. Sankofa is designed to nurture African American students and help them achieve at their highest levels. Audience, let's hear it one more time for our amazing Sankofa students. At this time, I'd like to invite our Board to take a photo with our students. Give them another round of applause. This concludes our presentation for this evening. How are you doing? Good to see you.
Thank you so much for that wonderful presentation performance from our Sankofa students. Let's give them another round of applause, please. Awesome. So 2.2 Resolution in Remembrance of President's Day, and I'm going to go ahead and ask Ms. Chavez to read us the resolution 2.2.
Whereas in 1885, George Washington's birthday, February 22nd, became a nationally recognized federal holiday, the first federal holiday to honor an individual's birthday. And whereas, under the Uniform Monday Holiday Act in 1971, President Richard Nixon passed an executive order officially moving Washington's birthday to the 3rd Monday in February. And whereas, although Washington's birthday is a federal holiday, each state is free to call it what they choose. And whereas, the holiday is positioned close to both George Washington's and Abraham Lincoln's birthday, led some to call the holiday President's Day. Therefore, be it resolved, the Board of Education of the San Bernardino City Unified School District does join California and the nation in celebrating February 17, 2025, as President's Day, and encourages district teachers to provide instruction on the contributions of George Washington, Abraham Lincoln, and other notable presidents as part of the history of our nation.
Make it a motion, please. Move. Second. It's been moved by Ms. Alexander, second by Ms. Medina. Vote, please. Ms. Chavez?
Aye.
Mr. Avila?
Aye.
Dr. Wyatt?
Aye.
It's not showing, but it was approved.
Okay, thank you. Motion passed. 3.0, 3.1, Receive Public Comments. This is the only time the public will have an opportunity to address the Board on items not on the agenda and within their subject matter jurisdiction, such as district policies, procedures, programs, services, or fiscal matters. Public comments are limited to five minutes per person. Six or more people who wish to speak on a topic with, on a topic will be provided no more than 30 minutes total. Speakers are cautioned that under California law, no person is immune from liability for making intentionally false or defamatory comments regarding any person simply because these comments are made at a public meeting. And first up, we have Ms. Pat, Ms. Barbara. Passcheck Cox. Thank you. Sorry.
Good evening, President Sabios, Vice President Abilas Grande, Mr. Ariano, and esteemed cabinets, esteemed members of the Cabinet and Board. My name is Barbara Passcheck Cox, and I proudly serve as the Vice President for the San Bernardino Teachers Association. And tonight, I stand before you not only as an individual, but representing the 3,000 members of the San Bernardino Teachers Association, who work tirelessly to shape the future of our students. This week, we celebrate and honor the invaluable work of our school counselors. These professionals do so much more than schedule classes. They are a guiding force in students' lives, helping them to navigate academic challenges, plan for their futures, and overcome personal obstacles. As former First Lady Michelle Obama once said, "Success isn't about how much money you make, it's the difference you make in people's lives." Our counselors embody this sentiment every day, and we are grateful for their unwavering commitment. We also recognize that February marks the start of Black History Month, a time for reflection, education, and celebration. This month provides a powerful opportunity to engage in honest conversations with our students about the past and how it shapes our collective future. Black history is American history, and it is our responsibility as educators to ensure that all students see themselves reflected in the curriculum, in their classrooms, and in the broader narrative of our nation. Finally, we want to express our sincerest appreciation to the Board for your role in approving our successful negotiations with the district. Strong partnerships lead to positive outcomes, and this agreement reflects our shared commitment to supporting educators and ultimately our students. Thank you for your time, your leadership, and your continued support to our schools. Good night.
Thank you so much. Next up, we have Mr. Jeff Scott.
Good evening, Madam President, members of the Board and Cabinet. My name is Jeffrey Scott. I'm actually a special representative and outreach specialist for the Western State Regional Council of Carpenters. So, one of the things I want to bring to light is, this is National CTE Month. So, if you are aware, maybe you're not, our organization has been doing some amazing things when it comes to the CTE space with your students and some of your CTE pathways. So currently, San Bernardino City is one of the first in San Bernardino County to have a partnership with a pre-apprenticeship program that's registered with Department of Apprenticeship Standards. So what that means is the students that are in your CTE pathways, they're getting a leg up to an apprenticeship program that a lot of these students in the surrounding communities do not have afforded to them. So really, what that means is your students are getting some of the top-quality programs in your district. You're being innovative, you're being exceptionally thoughtful on how you craft partnerships and what those mean for student outcomes. Because that means, that all sounds great on paper, and I'm talking very analytically, but for the students in the community, what this means is it's options and opportunities. These are options to get into an apprenticeship program that provides living wages, benefits that they may not have had growing up, and opportunities to advance into a career. Not just a job, we're not talking about working in a warehouse, we're not talking about a minimum wage fast food job that's just barely getting ends, you know, making meat ends, making ends meet, but where they're able to get into a mortgage-paying job, like they're able to buy a house in the community, they're able to set up their family for generational success. That's what apprenticeship affords these young men and women. But some of the things, and I really want to highlight some of the staff we've been working with, so Chelsea Ramirez, some part of the CTE staff, she's been awesome. So we work with currently three programs in the district, Cajon High School, Sang G High School, and Aurora High School. These students, right now, there's about 95 that are registered with the state, and upon completion of this program, they're actually going to get a unique certificate that tells everybody that they've finished a registered pre-apprenticeship program. So that's some of the best training, best partnerships that you can have in the state. So you're definitely on the trend, there's other people looking what the city is doing, City Schools is doing, and trying to play catch-up at this point. And I think, as somebody that's grown up in this community, my family's been here since the early 60s, my dad was born here, I was born here, I still live on the west side in the 6th Ward, never going to move, this is my home, I can't imagine living anywhere else. These are things I did not have growing up as a kid in the district. You know, my parents did a lot, you know, I went to elementary school in the district, right there in Musquee up the street, but they did everything they could to get me into route to the neighboring district, so they could give me a chance to succeed. They thought that was what's best for my success. And you know, I thought that was the right thing to do growing up. But I realized that if you want your community to be better, you have to be involved. If you want your community to grow and thrive, you have to give back in whatever form that is. So that was something that, when I got on staff with the carpenters, that was one of my missions, was how can I make my city better? What can I do? And today, I can say that some of these partnerships are going to create generational opportunities for these young men and women. So I hope that they never go unnoticed, I hope that the work that your staff is doing, your instructors, your counselors that were just recognized, some of the senior CTE staff, that they're celebrated all the time, because it's thankless work, like it's day in and day out, it's meetings after meetings, it's long times, it's long days, long nights, meeting, you know, whenever they can squeeze it in to create opportunities for kids. And that's one thing I hope that's never lost, is that the end goal is always student outcomes. What can we do to change lives? What kind of partnerships that you bring in affect those students' lives? And that's something that I truly think with this partnership through the registered pre-apprenticeship portion of it, that we're going to be able to do for a long time. And it's something that I'm very, very excited to have these students. We have three, what we call micro internships coming up. These students are going to come to our training center, do some hands-on activities, they're going to learn all the ins and outs of what it takes to become an apprenticeship, what kind of barriers that there are, and we get to have those truthful conversations of like, hey, what do you need to prepare yourself for this opportunity if this is what you want? And I promise you, these are students that may not fit in that college-for-all mentality, maybe there's some that they could go to college, but college isn't for them, they really need to know what else is out there. And I hope this is something that we can come back year in, year out, and have some of your students come and speak on this podium and say, you know what, the carpenters changed my life, thank you for changing my life, thank you, Board, because that's what it's all about. So I just want to take a moment and highlight the National CTE Month and some of the great work your staff is doing. So thank you very much.
Thank you. Next up, we have Lamar Hinger.
Good evening, esteemed Board members. So, I'm the, I guess, one of the instructors. I'm currently teaching at Fontana High School. After retirement, 38 years of being a carpenter, union carpenter, it's been good for me and my wife, my daughter, it's given us great medical, dental vision, great benefits, right? And so, my wife talked me into giving back to the next generation. She goes, you know, you're young, you retired at 51 years old, what are you doing? You know, you can give back to the next generation. So I ended up at Fontana High School. The result is amazing. Currently, right now, there's 14 students that are now union carpenters, and because of the relationship that we have with the carpenters, it's amazing. It is a two-year recognized apprenticeship through the state of California, and so our kids receive not only hands-on training, but life skills that they're going to use for a lifetime, right? And I want to piggyback just what my brother Jeff said, not all students are going to go to college with the military, right? It's not for everybody. What we're doing is, we're giving another opportunity to make a good livable wage with great benefits, and one day retire with dignity, like myself. And so that's what we're giving back to these students. They're, they've been in competitions, they've been on the news, and these CTE programs are getting more exposure than ever. It used to be the best kept secret, we don't want it to be the best kept secret. Now it's amazing, these kids are getting involved. My first year, I started off with the Fontana High School, I think, I believe I had 52 students. The third year, it jumped up to 100 students, because students were understanding the benefit. The third year, it jumped up to 150, this year, about 160, and students are standing in line because they're, they're understanding that maybe I don't want to go to college. But there are great trades, electricians, ironworkers, I can go on and on, where they can make a good livable wage and one day retire. But more so, what I like about my students, they're all currently working around the surrounding areas at home, where they can be with their families, where they can watch their kids play sports, baseball, football, soccer, that's what I love. And when they come back, what I have my students do that, that have already graduated, and they're now currently carpenters, they come back and talk to the students now, and they're saying, this has changed my life, this, this trade, the carpenters changed my life. So career connection is making a big impact in our community, and we thank you for everything you're doing for, for us, and for allowing the kids to work locally, it's really important, where they don't have, I don't want them driving to LA, and there's nothing wrong with that, but I want them to be home, and they're in San Bernardino. So thank you for allowing me to speak tonight, I appreciate everything you do, I know you do a lot for us, thank you.
Thank you so much. All right, I'm going to move on to 4.0, Public Hearings. 4.1, Public Hearing Regarding the Charter Renewal Petition for Woodward Leadership Academy. I will now, I will now open the public hearing. Then I'm going to go ahead and invite Ms. Hopwood to the podium. Okay, at this time, I apologize, I will go ahead and ask the petitioner to come up to the podium. I apologize, I didn't have your name, can you state your name?
Jacqueline Johnson.
Thank you.
Good evening, President Sabalos, Board members, and Superintendent Ariano. My name is Jacqueline Johnson, Executive Director of Woodward Leadership Academy. Tonight, I come before you requesting renewal at the conclusion of our current charter term, which ends June 30th, 2025. San Bernardino City Unified School District authorized Woodward Leadership Academy to operate in September of 2012. The first couple of years had many hiccups, which we overcame. My employment began in July of 2014. During the past 10 years, I've seen many changes, both highs and lows. What has remained the same is our determination to make our school a success. As with many schools, we continue to work diligently to support our students in this post-COVID era. We have a back-office provider that helps to ensure that we are fiscally solvent and that we focus our spending, the focus on our spending is what is best for the students. We have employees who are committed to the work of educating students who come from various backgrounds. We also have a strong leadership team in place, which supports the day-to-day operations of our school. Some of the ways we support our 78 students include daily transportation for students who do not have transportation and do not live within the walking distance of our campus. We have an amazing group of teachers who work tirelessly to provide rigorous lessons and educational experiences for our students. To support our students beyond the classroom, we have a Director of Student Success and a Discipline Coordinator, who work hand-in-hand and provide a strong male presence, not only for our male students, but for all students. We have a Literacy Specialist who pulls out students that have been identified as needing additional academic support. One student who she has worked with has shown growth in iReady by two grade levels and 85 points this year alone. We also have a full-time counselor who provides SEL lessons, offers supports for all grade levels requesting her assistance, and hosts monthly Coffee with the Counselor meetings, which always brings a full house from parents, students, and stakeholders. WLA partners with the SOAR Club at WLA for our after-school needs. This program is offered to students daily until 5:30. They offer supper, snacks, a homework block, outdoor activities, and preferred activity classes. The SOAR Club also provides 30 additional days of enrichment during the summer, winter, and spring break. We also have dedicated members of the office staff who work to ensure day-to-day operations of the school community. All these are key factors to our success, and they play a vital role in our improvement plan. Although CDE reports outline that our 23, 24 ELA and math scores are in the red, if you compare them to our 22, 23 test scores, you will notice that the scores dropped by three and 10 points respectively. This puts us in the red, but not in a position of hopelessness. At WLA, the students use iReady to improve their skills. This year, we began using the NWEA MAP Growth Program. You have already received the results from the winter benchmark. Based upon these results and continued effort of both students and staff, we expect to see academic growth on the upcoming CAS this spring. we expect to see academic growth on the upcoming cast this spring. Parents are extremely pleased and continually, continually express the excitement their students have when they come home and speak of their day at school. Staff is vested in the success of Woodward. Our suspension rate has been on the decline since twenty twenty-three. Our absenteeism is also on the decline. We have monthly awards ceremonies and offer educational field trips when we can. In conclusion, I am confident that the work we are doing to support our students, we are confident in the work that we are doing to support our students. I know that as we continue to do the work as outlined in our improvement pan, plan, the positive results will show forth. Thank you for your time and consideration. I have a brief slideshow which just highlights a couple of the things that we, we've done at Woodward over, over the years.
Here for Career Day to just kind of inspire kids, like just let them know that this is something they can do because I did it and so did they. Uh, so become a firefighter if you want. You guys have questions, you guys can reach out to us. Uh, and just know if you are fourteen, you can become an explorer, which is kind of a write-out and you can kind of see how we do things. And we can get you ready in case you do want to become a firefighter. So you can ride on this ladder truck at fourteen. So, uh, reach out to one of the fire stations close to you and we'll give you all the info and, uh, it was nice meeting you guys. Take care. We're here to tell former informant, our Career Day here, showing the kids a little bit of inspiration from the automotive side. We brought our Toyota Celico one U Z swap. Give them a little bit of inspiration when they get a little bit older. If they want to build something cool to get to the automotive experience. Happy to have us here. Hope to see you guys soon, baby.
What's going on, everybody? This is Chris Mason here from outreach and recruitment over at San Bernardino Valley College. I was like, you already know our slogan, without community, there is no unity. Valley College can get your knowledge. Thank you for the Leadership Academy for having us come out. This is a great opportunity to be in front of the kids and to really encourage them to want to do better down the line.
I'm Nishay Thompson. I'm the founder of Nishay Cosmetic. My job here today is entrepreneur and our cosmetics company is an inclusive beauty company. We meet the unique makeup needs of dark-skinned beauties all over the world.
Hi, my name is Ashley Sims. I'm an influencer, travel manager, overseeing and supporting cocktail and beverage influencers, along with some culinary professional literally active.
I'm a grad college and I'm here to talk to the students about the careers and choices in life that they have and the different options. One, they graduate from high school or middle school or one of these.
Thank you.
Thank you so much. And before I move forward, I did want to ask Ms. Hopwood if she wanted to make any comments.
Oh, good evening, um, President Sabayo, Vice President, uh, Abilis Grande, Superintendent, Cabinet and Board. Sorry for the delay. I was outside in the hallway. I thought for sure we had more public comments, so. And Mrs. Johnson kind of beat me to the punch, so I do want to apologize. Woodward is here tonight. They are the third, um, of the three charters that are renewing this year. They are already in place. They've been here for quite some time. They, um, have their public hearing and I believe they do have some public comments, so I'm going to let them get to that. But before I do, um, we do have a process when we renew charters, as I've explained before. So we've received their petition. We're taking a look at the data. We do pull a team together from, um, all the different departments to look at financing, at the facilities, at the data, at the instructional program and so on. Um, so none of that has changed. We will have for you, uh, staff findings fifteen days before the vote, which is April first. That's when we'll bring it back for a final vote on April first. This one, however, um, there's a little nuance to it in that, um, as Mrs. Johnson spoke to, they were identified as a low-performing charter and, um, our most recent legislation speaks a little bit to low-performing charters and what your options are. So I'm going to introduce Usuki Alawala from AALRR so she can speak a little to the legalities. Thank you.
Good evening, excuse me, Board Members and Superintendent. As Ms. Hopwood indicated, this charter school has been identified by the California Department of Education as a low-performing charter school. What that means is that unlike the other two charter petitions that you've been reviewing, Entrepreneur and PSA, this one is actually, the default position is denial of the charter petition. And in order for the board to make a determination that the charter should be renewed, we have to be certain that the performance improvement plan that they've submitted will actually result in um, academic achievement for the students that are there. They have a very small population of students. As you heard, um, it's only seventy-eight students, spanning quite a, um, gap of K to six. But as I said, the default position for this particular charter is denial. Their charter ends June thirtieth, twenty twenty-five. The district staff and our office are in the process of reviewing the entire charter petition, all appendices, but in particular, the improvement plan. And we will make our recommendation to you by no later than fifteen days prior to April first. Of course, I have, um, available for any questions that the board may have.
Thank you. Wait up. Thank you. Um, and I heard that there are public comments, so I will, at this time, go ahead and call forward. Those that are wanting to make public comment to come up altogether when there are more than six speakers. Oh yeah, for the charter school, I'm sorry. So at this point, I will call, um, the charter school public comments that we have here to come forward. We do have a combined of thirty minutes for more than six speakers. So, um, the clock will start and you can rotate as you wish. Um, and at the conclusion of the thirty minutes is when the public comment will, will end on that topic.
Good evening, Board. Good evening, San Bernardino County Unified School District. My name is Captain Matthew Hudson. I am the disciplinary coordinator for Woodward Leadership. I have a fourteen-year career in fire, which I serve on San Bernardino National Forest. I was hired here about a year ago to implement different discipline strategies throughout our school and, uh, to make a safe haven for our students to be academically sound. Um, what we've been doing, uh, we've had our disciplinary drop tremendously. Um, currently, um, within our school, we had zero physical altercations. We've been seeing our test scores tremendously go up due to a program that we adopted, NWEA, which is the Northwest Evaluation Association, which gives our students, uh, a pre, a prelook on how to take a test tech, um, uh, electronically. And also, we've been working hand-in-hand, uh, with our literacy specialists on how to get them academically in class as well. Um, through us giving our students, um, open communication, empowering them through our wisdom, experience, um, in our professionalism, we've seen our attendance go up. We've seen, um, students motivated to come to school now. Um, the participation rate has also been going up. Um, and we want to thank the San Bernardino Unified School District for allowing us to be able to administer and be visual leaders to our, to our students. Thank you, guys. And, um, that will conclude, um, my speech.
Thank you.
Hi, my name is Matthew Figueroa. I am the, I am the president of US, the ASB Group. And I come here to talk about why Woodward Leadership Academy should be renewed. Woodward Leadership Academy has done so much for me. It has helped me with map reading and so much more. In my old school, they would never help me, but at Woodward, the staff never gave up on you no matter what. They are all good people. The first day of school, I would shy out and I liked to talk to people, but now everyone makes me feel welcome. I am willing to do anything for the school to remain open. I am going to give, I am never going to give up, just like the staff never gave up on us. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Cielo Sendejha and I am Vice President of our ASB Group. I am here to talk about why our charter school, Woodward Leadership Academy should get renewed. I believe our school stays open because it is a safe and supportive place where students can learn and grow. Without school, we would miss out on important lessons. Keeping the school open ensures that we can continue to build a strong, positive community, community and keep moving forward with our education and as a school family. Thank you for hearing me out.
Good evening, everybody. Um, why I believe that Woodward Leadership Academy should, um, get that renewal. I'm a single mom of six boys, two teenagers and four grade school, um, elementary school students. All four of my smaller children were in Rialto Unified School District. I prided myself on keeping my kids in Rialto Unified School District because I felt like it would be better than San Bernardino Unified School District. I was noted, I, I was told about Woodward Leadership Academy and I let one of my children go over there. Because he was actually on the verge of getting kicked out of Rialto Unified School District for behavior, um, academics, everything, and he was only in kindergarten. I had to quit my job. Um, I had a good job working at the county, the county of San Bernardino. And I had just got a promotion and I had to quit my job after three weeks because I was getting phone calls every single day from Rialto for my son, for my kindergartner. When I put him at Woodward Leadership Academy, no behavior problems. Academic scores skyrocketed. My baby gets fours and threes, that's As and Bs, nothing lower. My fifth grader, he struggled in reading. Everything is going up. My second grader, he was, he called himself stupid because he never got academic awards when he was in Rialto Unified School District. He gets academic awards now. All of my children, all of my little kids that are going to Woodward Leadership Academy are, their grades are amazing. Everybody's getting good grades. Everybody's behavior is awesome. Um, as you were told, um, the male presence in the school has played a huge factor in my kids' behavior. My kids want to go to school. They love being at school now. They come home and they tell me about how a man should treat a woman. They come home and they tell me, um, everything about their day. They love being at school. They love their school. They, sometimes they don't even want to come home. But Woodward Leadership Academy has done tremendous things for my kids. Um, it's made a huge impact in my life. I'm able, I was able to get a job again um, after not being able to work for almost a year because my kids are at a school where the staff really cares about my kids. Their education, their behavior, just their, them as, they care about them. And I love Woodward Leadership Academy for everything that they've done, the entire staff, everybody there. It's, it's a blessing to me and my kids. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, Board. My name is Keith Tabor. I am writing this to strongly express the renewal of Woodward Leadership Academy. Woodward Leadership County is a great school for all students, providing neutral students' environment while they can thrive academically and person, personality. As a parent, I have firsthand witnessed the positive impact the school has made on his, on my son's education. He is doing so much better in Woodward. As a matter of fact, he is almost a straight-A student, something that was not achievable in a traditional public school. The discipline and flexibility of the teachers at Woodward remarkably help each, help all the teacher, all the teachers help the, the students one-on-one. They always have time to help every single student according to their needs. They, they thrive in leadership. They teach their kids how to become better role models, not just in school, but outside of school. Like the, the last lady said, my son is coming to us home saying, oh, they're teaching us how to be gentlemen and ladies, how to treat a lady, how to open the doors, how to, um, they're teaching them how to do a tie, you know, how to dress, how to properly, um, speak to somebody. So they're teaching them all this and something that my son wasn't doing in, in a public school. They're giving them the time and the ability to, to become somebody better for themselves and also for the community. And they're thriving and they want more. And I never seen that from my son. My son was, was not doing very well in elementary. He did, he didn't want to go to school. He doesn't even want to miss a day of school. Now, he gets awards for not, for showing up every day. They always tell me, my, your son is doing so great, your son this, and, and I'm proud of it. I'm proud of him and I'm proud of what the school is doing. So this is why I think you guys should keep, uh, Woodward Charter going. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, Board. Um, my name is Selena Hollins and I'm an employee here at Woodward. Um, I'll be reading a letter from another parent who was unfortunately able to attend. Dear members of the San Bernardino County Unified School District, I am writing to share my deep gratitude and strong support for Woodward Leadership Academy, a school that has profoundly impacted my family for over a decade. My connection to Woodward Leadership Academy began when my oldest son started kindergarten there in two- My connection to Woodward Leadership Academy began when my oldest son started kindergarten there in 2016. He remained a student at the school until his graduation from sixth grade in 2023. Throughout this time, Woodward Leadership Academy has been much more than just an educational institution. It has become an integral part of our family. The school has provided my children with invaluable opportunities for academic and personal growth. And as a single parent raising two boys in San Bernardino County, I have also benefited from the supportive environment that Woodward Leadership Academy fosters. The school's location, its dedicated staff and administration, and its after-school programs and workshops during extended breaks have allowed me to pursue my own personal career goals, all while ensuring my children receive the care, education, and guidance they need. My younger son, who is currently in second grade at Woodward Leadership Academy, continues to thrive in this nurturing environment. He thoroughly enjoys his school days, and he frequently talks about his love for learning, especially in math and reading. He has formed a strong bond with his teacher, Ms. S., and connects well with several of the administrative staff, particularly the male staff. I deeply appreciate how the school emphasizes the importance of male role models in a child's development. The staff's consistent engagement with students, particularly through morning greetings, plays a vital role in shaping well-rounded, emotionally capable, and reliable young men and women for our community. This is just one example of how Woodward Leadership Academy takes pride in providing students with a well-rounded education that extends beyond academics. I truly cannot overstate how much my family has benefited from the love and support provided by Woodward Leadership Academy. The school has been an invaluable resource to us, and I am eternally grateful to the entire staff, the leadership, and the executive board for their dedication to the children and families in the community. It is my sincerest hope that Woodward Leadership Academy continues to be a foundational cornerstone in the city of San Bernardino, continuing its pattern of excellence and positively impacting future generations. Thank you for the opportunity to share this information and for your continued support of Woodward Leadership Academy. Sincerely, S. Heath. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, my name is Tiffany Bowdy. I've been with Woodward Leadership for about seven, eight years now. I have three kids that has attended Woodward Leadership. One of my sons has graduated. When he came to Woodward Leadership, my son had behavior issues. Since he's been in Woodward, he thrived. He, his behavior changed. He became good at math, and he became very good at reading. My son has currently graduated, so now I have two daughters there, Hasina and Jamila Nali. Hasina, she do have a disability where she doesn't understand math. But thanks to Captain Hudson, he helps my daughter with math, and she loves going to school every morning just to learn how to do math. My daughter Jamila, she's been with the school since she was preschool. My daughter can read and write sentences at five years old. So it's a really good school, and I really enjoyed the school. I've been a volunteer parent there also. I just love Woodward.
Thank you.
Good evening, members, Board members and staff of San Bernardino City USD. My name is Zach Wolfe, and I'm here in support of the renewal of Woodward Leadership Academy. I have worked in charter schools, education, and finance for the last 11 years, seven of which have been supporting charter schools here in San Bernardino City Unified. One of those schools is Woodward Leadership Academy, which I had the privilege of meeting four years ago during the height of the pandemic. In the four years since meeting their team, I have seen Woodward find financial and operational success, even while battling facility issues that forced the school to move sites twice. The financial success Woodward has seen over the last four years is not all that I have seen improve and strengthen. I've witnessed their board members and staff go above and beyond and donate their spare time to ensure the educational success of all Woodward students and its community at large. As Woodward's back office provider, I am not always on campus, but each and every time I show up to campus, I am greeted by staff and students by name. It always astonishes me to see seven, eight, and nine-year-olds remember my name, ask me how I am doing, and be genuinely inquisitive to what I do for their school. They were always so eager to share with me what they were working on and what role some of them served on for the school's ASB. Seeing this genuine excitement for learning and meeting new faces is one of the many reasons Woodward Leadership Academy should be renewed. Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Alyssa San Genito, best known as Ms. S. I'm the first and second grade teacher at Woodward Leadership Academy, and I've had the privilege of teaching at Woodward Leadership Academy for the past three years. I started here as a long-term substitute teacher, and since, I've completed my credential and have made this school my home. I'm deeply invested in the mission of this school, not just as a teacher, but as a part of a larger, but as part of a larger community that truly supports the needs of our students. The relationship we build with our students goes beyond academics. For some, coming to school is about, for some, coming to school is more than learning. It's about finding a sense of family, consistency, and love. It's a place where they can feel safe and supported, and for many of our students, that is life-changing. What makes WLA so special is the small, individualized environment we provide. In a larger public school, it can be difficult to meet the unique needs of every student. But at WLA, we have the ability to focus on the whole child. Our smaller class sizes allow us to build meaningful relationships with each student and their family. This allows us to truly address the academic and emotional needs that our students bring with them every day. I choose to stay at WLA because I know that I serve a greater purpose here than simply holding the title of teacher. The work we do, the connections we make, and the lives we touch go far beyond the classroom. These students have given me more than I could ever have expected, and it's a privilege to be a part of their journey. I would choose WLA over and over again because it's a school that values the individual, nurtures each student's growth, and truly makes a difference. Thank you for allowing me to share my thoughts. As we discuss our charter renewal, I ask you to consider the invaluable impact that this school has not only for our students, but also on our broader community. I am proud to be a part of WLA, and I hope we can continue to provide these opportunities for years to come. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Arthur Congo. I'm the director of local advocacy for the California Charter Schools Association, here speaking in support of Woodward Leadership Academy. As we heard earlier, Woodward is classified as a low-performing school under California ed code. So this designation places the school in a challenging position. As a low-performing school, they must submit verified data to demonstrate meaningful student progress or post-secondary success to qualify for renewal. Under state guidelines, these schools may only receive a two-year renewal if the authorizing district finds that the school is taking meaningful steps to address the root cause of its low performance as detailed in a written improvement plan and that there is a clear and convincing evidence of student growth or post-secondary outcomes backed by verified data. So I know Woodward is working proactively and collaborating with district staff to develop an improvement plan addressing these challenges. Additionally, the school has access to a variety of renewal resources that are offered by CCSA to support this process and build on its commitment to improving student outcomes. Specifically, they've gone through our renewal data review process with our Schools and Data's team, which is intended to support schools processing and understanding their data in preparation for their renewal. Woodward has demonstrated a strong commitment to enhancing its educational programs and addressing performance gaps through this process. Verified data from the school's NWEA map assessments, which I believe has been shared with the board and is probably available upon request, shows measurable progress this year alone, highlighting the effectiveness of these efforts. School leadership remains dedicated to sustaining and building on this progress, reflecting Woodward's ongoing commitment to achieving positive measurable outcomes for its students and the broader San Bernardino City community. Thank you for your time and consideration. I'm looking forward to reviewing the district staff report once it is released. If you have any questions, please feel free to reach out. Thank you.
Thank you.
Peace and love to you, esteemed Board. First off, it's a blessing and honor just to be able to be in your presence. You see, the community has showed up and showed out for Woodward Leadership Academy, and so I just thought I wanted to come in here and speak with y'all, not only as a past contractor with Woodward Leadership Academy, but from the lived experience of growing up on the west side of San Bernardino. For 17 years, I grew up on California Street, right where Woodward Leadership is located, California baseline. And if you know anything about the area, man, them kids is going through a lot. It's a lot of things happening. So when we look at the data sometimes, when we look at the numbers, when we look at the academic performances, we must also look at what's happening in the community. Where are these students coming from, right? I can recall being a student walking through those streets, hoes in my shoes, not knowing when my next meal is going to come. Some of these kids are showing up to school hungry. They ain't ate nothing but top ramen noodles and pinto beans. I remember when I was a kid, I was seven years old, I looked in the cabinet, I'm like, "Momma, I'm not eating another can of pinto beans. I'm gonna wait for breakfast in the morning from the free lunch for the school," right? And so the experiences, the things that our kids are going through and living through, we have to take that into account. We're talking about whether we're going to shut a school down and not fund them anymore. So my ask is not that we consider not funding them, but we, we should fund them even more. We should provide even more support and use your seats, use your votes, use your elected position to actually pour into these young dreamers and these young kids out here because they need the support. The numbers are showing that they need the support, so let's support them. Let the whole community get behind them. Step up and stand up for these young dreamers. It's not about a teacher trying to keep a job or, or executive director of a charter school trying to keep the doors open. It's about pouring in to the lived experiences of our young students, of our dreamers. And I know San Bernardino believes in their students. I know y'all do as a district. I've seen it. I've been a product of it. So we asking y'all to step in and use your power, use your vote, whatever y'all got to do to get this, a two-year extension for Woodward Leadership. Man, please, please, we begging y'all to do so. We crying out for y'all to do so. The students are doing the best that they can. They don't show up every day with the loser mentality. They show up as winners. They show up as resilient. They show up as students with heart. They show up as students that are going through stuff. They going through something, y'all. And you got the power to do something about it. So please, use your seats to not pull back the contract. Use your seats to not, to not, use your seat to not stop funding from the contract, but to actually pour more into it. Give us all the resources that y'all got. Point us in the directions that we got to go in. And I promise you, in two years, when we stand here after our review, Woodward's going to look like a better place. Why? Because not only did the site believe in them, did the administration believe in them, did the students believe in them, but you will be a part of that success story as well. So I ask that y'all come on this journey with these young west-side babies because I was one myself, and have their back and support them. Peace and love to you all.
Thank you.
Hi, good afternoon. My name is Andrea Constantino, and my daughter is currently attending Woodward Leadership Academy. She is a TK student at the location, and I struggle to find a location for her here in the city of San Bernardino. If you call preschool central or any other location or even the school's district, they only give you three options to enroll your child for TK. And Woodward Leadership was not recommended to me by the school district. It was recommended to me by another parent, as well as my child was just recently diagnosed with level-one autism. And Woodward Leadership has given her the opportunity to grow there. She literally just started talking more. She's given, she's been given the support and the opportunity to grow. She was enrolled into another school, and they only gave her nine days to adjust. So when we did enroll her into Woodward Leadership Academy, I did discuss this information with them, and they did allow me to, you know, they gave me the reassurance that they were going to work with her, and they did let, tell me that she wasn't going anywhere. But it is the opportunity that, I'm sorry. I as well, you know, just need the support. I'm a solo parent. The after-school program is allowing me to finish my degree in nursing, as well as, you know, just having the support with her and her academics because she's thriving there. She loves her friends, her teachers, and as well as just the administration staff. She is definitely getting the support that she needs. So I just want you guys to go ahead and take that in consideration, that this is just her first year, and she is thriving there. So thank you so much for allowing me to speak, and I hope you guys have a great night.
Please stand. I am somebody. I am somebody. I am somebody. I am kind. I respect myself. I respect others. I can do whatever I put my mind to do. There is greatness in me. I'm intelligent. I am talented. I'm a great reader. I'm a great writer. I am great at doing math. For me to fail? Impossible. Because failure is not an option. I am somebody. I am somebody. I am somebody. I will have a positive impact on the earth. I love you, and there's nothing you can do about it. Have a wonderful night.
Thank you. That's the affirmation that the students recite every morning before they head to class. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Thank you, thank you so much for that and for the wonderful presentation at the end. So at this time, this public hearing is now closed. The board will not vote at this time. Moving on to item 4.2. Public hearing item 4.2 for tentative agreement between San Bernardino City Unified School District and San Bernardino Schools Police Officers Association. Article 6 wages, Article 8 retire health insurance, Article 10 holidays, Article 14 workers' compensation, Article 9 hours, Article 14 reimbursement expenses and materials, Article 23 term of agreement. I will now open the public hearing. Are there any public comments?
There are none.
This public hearing is now closed. Be it resolved, the Board of Education adopts the tentative agreement. Article 6 wages, Article 8 retire, retiree health insurance, Article 10 holidays, Article 14 workers' compensation, Article 9 hours, Article 14 reimbursement expenses and materials, Article 23 term of agreement between San Bernardino Schools Police Officers Association and the San Bernardino City Unified School District.
Move.
Second. Move by Mr. Tillman, second by Ms. Medina. Vote, please. Dr. Wyatt.
Madam President, aye.
Motion passed. Item 4.3. Public hearing from memorandum of understanding between San Bernardino City Unified Schools, School District and San Bernardino Teachers Association. Article 11 wages salary increase. I will now open the public hearing. Are there any public comments?
No.
Right? This public hearing is now closed. Be it resolved, the Board of Education adopts the memorandum of understanding between San Bernardino City Unified School District and the San Bernardino Teachers Association. Article 11 wages approval of a 2.0% salary increase effective July 1st, 2024 on annual-based salary for fiscal year 2425.
Move.
Second. Moved by Mr. Tillman, second by Ms. Medina. Vote, please. Dr. Wyatt.
Aye.
Mr. Tillman. Motion passed. 5.0, closed session. 5.1, closed session comments. Do we have any closed session comments?
There are none.
5.2, closed session agenda. We will move to closed session. All right. We are coming back now from closed session. And we will be moving toward 5.2, closed session agenda. Sorry, 6.0, action reported from closed session. 6.1, claim number 615064. Be it resolved, the Board of Education approves settlement authorization claim number 615064 in the amount of $80,000. Can I get a motion?
So move.
Second. By Mr. Tillman, second by Ms. Medina. Vote.
Aye.
Thank you. Motion passed. 6.2, approval of approval of two elementary school principals. Be it resolved, the Board of Education approves the appointment of the following employees. Deborah Grant Devari and Lori Simonak. Elementary school principal, school side, school side effective date, work year, and salary to be determined.
Move.
Second. By Mr. Tillman, second by Ms. Medina. Vote, please.
Aye.
Mr. Santos.
Motion passed.
All right, board, I get a, I have the honor of introducing two new strong principals for our school district. First up, Mrs. Deborah Devari. I've known Mrs. Devari for quite some time. She's been in the district over 28 years as a fabulous educator, working alongside some of our most excellent scholars and families. As a teacher, resource teacher, program facilitator, admin designee, and currently at Marshall Elementary School. And we are excited about her leadership, and we're excited about having her continue her work in the district. I introduce to you at this time, Mrs. Devari.
Good evening, board members, cabinet, superintendent, community members. Thank you very much for trusting me for being the next principal at Marshall Elementary. I am extremely honored and humbled and grateful to continue to partner with this wonderful community. I am excited to go on this journey with them with the shared vision of being student-centered and solution-oriented. And I'm excited to continue to collaborate with this community, with our dedicated educators, families, students, staff, as we continue to be devoted on overall student achievement and student well-being. Thank you again. Thank you for being here.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Devari. Next up, Mrs. Lori Simonak, another excellent educator, sorry, in San Bernardino City Unified School District, has been with us as what, 29 years? We have some fabulous administrators joining our principal ranks. Mrs. Simonak, teacher from 1996. Can you imagine that? Started with us in 1996. Program facilitator, current vice principal at Muscoy Elementary School. We're excited about Mrs. Lori Simonak. Please come.
All right. Good evening, board members and cabinet members. I am so honored. I'm blessed to be with you guys here tonight. It's been a long journey, 29 years in the making, to be here today, and I'm so blessed, so, so blessed. I've met so many wonderful people along the way, educators, leaders that have gotten me here today. Some of them are here, have mentored me and guided me, you know, to be in front of you. So I'm so, so happy and honored. I'm really excited about the journey. I just wasn't sure if I was supposed to announce that of what school that I was gonna be going to, but I am thrilled to be going to Parkside, and I'm ready to shine their work, put in the time, dedicate myself. I'm very passionate. I build relationships quickly. I just am absolutely thrilled to go to Parkside and be their leader and make them shine and have them reach their goals and show all of you my full potential. I'm just, like I said, I'm blessed. My family, some of my family's here tonight, and I'm so thankful to have spent the last 29 years here in this district, and I plan to spend the next however long you'll have me. So thank you so, so very much. I appreciate you.
Thank you.
Mr. Tillman.
Congratulations to both of you. Welcome aboard. Mr. Devari, did you used to work for the county? And did your first job at Thompson? So so you knew Tom O'Donnell and, okay? I helped you get your first job at Thompson, or introduced you to the right people, right? 30 years ago, right? Congratulations.
Thank you so much, and again, congratulations. Moving on to 6.3, approval of elementary vice principals. Be it resolved, the Board of Education approves the appointment of the following employees, Katie Omara and Denise Pereira, elementary school vice principal, school side effective date, work year, and salary to be determined. Can I get a motion?
Move.
Second. Moved by Mr. Tillman, second by Ms. Medina. Vote, please. Dr. Wyatt.
Aye.
Motion carried.
All right. Another longstanding SBCUSD employee, moving from bilingual program facilitator at Salinas Elementary School to vice principal at Wilson Elementary School, Mrs. Denise Barrera. Like that? Mrs. Denise Barrera. Been with the district since 2008. Fabulous educator, loves the community, and ready to serve. Mrs. Denise Pereira, thank you.
Good evening, board members and cabinet. I am very excited to be here today and accept this position. I am grateful, and I thank all of you for this opportunity. I will not disappoint. I am going to be the vice principal at Wilson Elementary, and I know that I can make sure that the, to work closely with the community, with the students and the staff, and I'm very excited to join Mr. Madrigal in this journey. Thank you.
Thank you.
And then, board, finally, another fabulous educator coming by way of Redlands Unified School District, Dr. Katie Omara. Longstanding educator in our special education area since 2005, advocating for scholars with special needs, advocating for family members and community members. And the panel for Barton Elementary School appreciated her tenacity and dedication and commitment to our scholars and community. I welcome tonight, board, Dr. Katie Omara.
Good evening, board and cabinet. I just wanted to say thank you. As an educator that's actually spanned the globe and the country as a military spouse, I'm very happy to have landed in San Bernardino City Unified. I look forward to working for the Barton Bulldogs and growing alongside their educators, supporting inclusive and thriving elementary school. I very much just look forward to part of the process and growing and learning along with everybody and growing student achievement.
Thank you. Thank you so very much, and welcome. Welcome aboard. 6.4, expulsion of students. Be it resolved, the Board of Education accepts and adopts the recommendation and findings of the hearing panel based on a review of the panel's findings, facts, and recommendations, and orders the expulsion of the following students with the identification numbers as listed below in accordance with the board rules and regulations and compliance with Education Code Section 48900. Can I get a motion?
Move.
Second. Motion by Mr. Tillman, second by Ms. Alexander. Vote, please. Dr. Wyatt.
Aye.
Ms. Rosales Medina.
Motion carries. 6.5, lift readmit of expulsions of students. Be it resolved, the Board of Education authorizes the readmission of the following students with the identification numbers as indicated below to schools of the San Bernardino City Unified School District in accordance with the board rules and regulations and in compliance with Education Code Section 48900. Motion.
Move.
Second. Motion by Mr. Tillman, second by Ms. Medina. Vote, please.
Aye.
Thank you. It looks like the motion passed.
Yes.
Thank you. 6.6, student recommended for expulsion, exclude mandatory offenses, but remanded to youth court for other means of correction. Be it resolved, the board, sorry, it's cutting off here. Be it resolved, the Board of Education accepts and adopts the recommendation and findings of fact of positive youth development and orders an attempt at other means of correction of the expulsion of the following students with the identification numbers as listed below in accordance with board rules and regulations and in compliance with Education Code Section 48900. Motion, please.
Move.
Second. Motion by Mr. Tillman, second by Ms. Alexander. Vote, please. Dr. Wyatt.
Aye.
Motion carries. 6.7, other closed session action. There is no other closed session action at this time. 7.0, student board member reports and comments, and I will go ahead and start with Mr. Avila. I'm gonna come back. Ms. Chavez, are you ready?
Thank you. Good evening, board members and community. My name is Anna McTure Chavez, and I am a senior attending San Bernardino High School. As we wrap up our winter sports season, I'm proud to share that our girls' water polo, boys' basketball, and both boys' and girls' wrestling team have all won their leagues. In honor of Black History Month, ASB will host lunch activities every Friday. Additionally, we invite incoming and current freshmen to our pathway showcase on February 20th to give them the opportunity to know what pathways and programs we offer at San Bernardino High. This past month, I attended the Coalition Against Sexual Exploitation and San Bernardino County's Human Trafficking Symposium, which was a powerful experience. Hearing the stories of survivors, learning how to recognize the signs of human trafficking was impactful. At the end of the symposium, my peers and I made a pledge to raise awareness about this important issue. Lastly, I want to wish our school counselors a happy, counselors week, and express my gratitude for all of your hard work. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Chavez. Mr. Avila?
Hello, and thank you all for being here, and my name is Wilbur Favilla. I am a senior at Indians Springs High School. And the stuff that is happening right now is that we're gonna have a Latino HistoriBe on March 13th, 2025, at the Performing Arts Center. And right, right now, today was the second day of our spirit week that we are having that is based around winter spirit, but also mainly Valentine's Day. And a bunch of other stuff that is going on is that I don't have anything else for that. But stuff that I'm currently working on, it is work in progress for me right now. It is a little safe haven for students to be able to communicate with other students to, I don't know, talk about problems and situations that are happening either in campus or outside of it, whichever they please. I haven't started it yet because I kinda need some support on it, which I'm getting from the helpful people at IXL. And I have to thank them for being able to support me, trying to do this, to be able to get student voice out there. And that is all. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Avila. Next up would be 8.0. However, there has been a recommendation to move 9.6. However, there has been a recommendation to move 9.6 up. Can I, do I have consensus for the Board to move it up? Alrighty, so approval of the proposed community workforce agreement. Sorry about that. I'm also still learning the process, so thank you for your patience with me. Be it resolved, the Board of Education approves the proposed Community Workforce Agreement, CWA, by and between the San Bernardino City Unified School District and San Bernardino Riverside Building and Construction Trades Council and the Signatory Craft Councils and Unions. Government Code Section 3547.5 before a public school employer enters into a written agreement with an exclusive representative covering matters within the scope of representation. The major provisions of the agreement, including but not limited to the costs that would be incurred by the public school employer under the agreement for the current and subsequent fiscal years, shall be disclosed at a public meeting of the public school employer. So I guess wanted to clarify, we should hear the public comments first and then make the motion afterwards? Is that how we want to go about it? I'm fine with that. Okay, so in that case, I will call up Mr. Dave Everett up to the podium.
All right, thank you. My name is Dave Everett, and I'm with the Western Electrical Contractors Association. The Western Electrical Contractors Association is against this project labor agreement or community benefit agreement. This project labor agreement will discriminate against all non-union apprentices, no non-union apprentices if they live in San Bernardino, if they live in the district, if they went to school here, if they pay taxes here, none of the apprentices that are non-union will be able to work under this PLA. 98% of minority workers are, I shouldn't say minority workers, I should say black and Latino construction work companies are non-union according to, and don't take my word for it, according to the National Black Chamber of Commerce. The quote as well is, "98% of black and construction companies are non-union shops. Thus, a project labor agreement greatly limits the opportunities for black and Hispanic firms," says John Harmon, the founder and president and CEO of the African American Chamber of Commerce of New Jersey. And government mandated PLAs are opposed by the National Black Chamber of Commerce because almost all minority-owned contracting firms are not affiliated with unions. African and American-owned contracting firms, specifically small businesses that employ their own core workforce of skilled construction workers who are not unionized and are generally more diverse than construction workers coming from the union hiring hall, says Harry Alford, President and CEO of the National Black Chamber of Commerce. Because of that, and 85% of all construction workers, closer to 90 frankly at the last Department of Labor Statistics, they're non-union as well. So to go from 85 or 89 up to 98% for minority workers isn't exactly a shocking jump. And that's why the only state-certified black apprenticeship program in California, the Black Contractors Association, also opposes PLAs. Their apprentices nor any union-free apprentices, as I mentioned, are allowed to be used under PLAs. Also, this will increase your costs. You know, where you got 15 or 20 bidders, you're gonna end up getting three or four bidders. And especially in this environment where, you know, Los Angeles has a project labor agreement, the county of Los Angeles has a project labor agreement, you're gonna be competing for 13% of the construction workforce that state-approved apprenticeship programs to build all of your projects, at the same time that Los Angeles is competing for that tiny percentage as well. So it will increase costs for sure. At least $85 million in projects, according to your website, seem to be left, and that's not accounting any future bond as well. And so multiple studies have shown that PLAs increase costs somewhere between 15 and 30%. And so the city of Pomona, just a few months ago, had said that, according to their staff, it would cost about 30% more because they were considering a project labor agreement. And so that means 12 to $24 million is gonna be wasted. You're gonna build four buildings for the price of five, and just in the very first project under Riverside Unified School District's project labor agreement, they end up having a $30 million cost overrun. And so that's money that can go to your students, that's money that can go to your teachers. And the first vote to, in the process of this project labor agreement, there doesn't seem to be any first vote where you started the negotiation process. There's supposed to be a vote to start the process and a vote on the final PLA. Today seems to be the vote on the final PLA. When did you guys authorize the negotiation? When did that happen? It doesn't seem like there's any public record at all of that and no opportunity for the public to see that happening and to be part of that negotiation. And so all of your discussions have been with the union, none of those conversations have been with non-union, 85% of the construction workforce. So not only is there no vote to have the first negotiation, but there's no cost mentioned for the PLA administrator. In the city of San Diego, they passed a PLA, and the cost for the administrator was $1.5 million over the total life of the PLA. And so to say, to not even mention the cost, again, you know, you're not taking a first vote, you're not mentioning the cost to the public, is there not gonna be a PLA administrator? Is the district gonna administer the PLA? These are, none of these questions are answered in the document. And, you know, one of the other issues is that districts that pass PLAs, like Santa Ana, like San Diego Unified, they're laying off teachers and having budget crises. This is not a time to end up wasting 12 to $24 million. So please postpone this vote so you can hear both sides. And when voters pass these bonds, there was no mention of a PLA. This is completely dishonest to voters. And there's no talk in 2004 or 2012 on either of those bonds that you guys would be doing this. Don't waste the district's money, give taxpayers the best bet, and let everybody bid on these projects. Thanks so much.
Thank you so much. Up next, I have quite a few different requests for comment on this item that appear to all be in favor of. So I'm gonna call those folks up, and together you will have 30 minutes combined. I won't call you by name, so whoever submitted a request for me and wants to speak can just make their way up. But again, you'll just have to be mindful of your own time. It'll be together 30 minutes combined.
Girls and sisters, may you all stand.
Stand with me. Good evening, San Bernardino City School Board. My name is Ricardo Cisneros. I'm the Executive Secretary Treasurer of the Island Empire Labor Council, represent 96 unions in this region, over 400,000 members. For too long, we've had industry in this region take advantage and exploit our communities by using our tax dollars to produce an untrained and underpaid workforce. Most of the time, bringing in folks from other states to do the work that our folks here locally can do. Tonight, we're creating real economic development in partnership with you. And taking a leap towards winning the war against poverty by moving forward with a community workforce agreement. As a first-generation Mexican-American, leading the labor movement in this region, I applaud your leadership in taking a step to create true equity in our community. The local hire piece of the community workforce agreement gives opportunity to the constituents you serve so they can work locally and participate in prospering their own neighborhoods. So let's make SBCUSD a training ground for these men and women to earn what they learn, creating career pathways, and stimulating our local economy with mortgage sustainable jobs for our community. I want to thank you in advance for doing the right thing for the community, for your constituents, by moving forward with the CWA. Thank you very much.
Good evening, Cabinet, Board members. Superintendent Ariano, thank you for your service. My name is Albert Wardy, and I'm a representative of the building trades. Just listening to the previous speaker, not the first speaker. The information, quite frankly, Pomona did pass their community workforce agreements. Santa Ana did renew their community workforce agreement. San Bernardino Community College just renewed their community workforce agreement. If we were failing, they would not do that. They're very frugal, fiscal, and appropriate in everything they do, right? I want to talk about the benefits that we do have, right? We're in a crisis right now in San Bernardino, in the Island Empire, just with poverty, with homelessness, and this is an area and avenue where we can help, right? We can get in. We were talking earlier about the kids that we're having problems with in the school district, and now is one of them, right? But now we can touch them. Now we can get them into these programs and teach them a valid trade and teach them a livable wage. The bottom line is we have, as a tradesperson, we make a good wage, but we still can't afford a house, right? We can't, we need two people to be able to afford that house. Most of our workers and the workers that you see behind me are diverse from every. So to say that 90% that we're not achieving diversity is ridiculous, right? So, and most of these people are having to drive to LA to work. And what are we doing? We're taking that time away from our kids, from coaching their Little League baseball, from mothers being able to teach their kids. There's so much that this community workforce agreement's gonna be able to achieve. And I value just your courage to be able to vote for this, to bring this up. We know that you've got a lot of questions, right, and concerns, and everybody had them, right, with San Bernardino Community College, with the city of Paris that just renewed theirs. They had the same arguments. I sent you some information on that. That is current information, right? So I just thank you for everything that you guys are doing, but I'm in full support of this community workforce agreement. I started as an ironworker. I became an organizer, and I can guarantee I became an advocate for non-union workers. Everybody can qualify, everybody can compete for the business. We do not keep, I've got one statistic that shows about the type of, let me see. About the, well, it's a statistic, about the percentages of non-union companies that actually, under a community workforce agreement, outnumbered the union contractors. Everybody has an opportunity to compete for the business. It's against the law that we can keep them apart. So we're in favor of this community workforce agreement, and thank you for giving me the time.
Hello, Board. Hello, Board. My name is Vanessa Ingles, and I'm the founder and president of Tradeswomen Sisterhood. I also would like to introduce my sister, Khadija Soper here. She is our Training Director with Tradeswomen Sisterhood. I am also an electrician with the International Brotherhood of Electrical Workers, having successfully completed our comprehensive, five-year Inside Wireman apprenticeship program. Today, I stand before you to advocate for the San Bernardino City Unified School District to enter into this community workforce agreement. The need for a CWA cannot be overstated. It serves as a powerful tool to ensure local hire, which not only strengthens our community, but also provides our residents with meaningful, family-sustaining employment opportunities. By prioritizing local hire, we can uplift families and stimulate our local economy. Moreover, a CWA is vital for promoting gender equity in the construction industry. As a woman in a traditionally male-dominated field, I can personally attest to the challenges faced by women in construction. This experience is what inspired me to create Tradeswomen Sisterhood in 2016. Our mission is to promote the equitable opportunities available to women in the LGBTQ+ communities within the construction industry. This translates to building trades, union apprenticeship programs. A CWA would help ensure that women receive equal access to job opportunities on projects in your district. Additionally, it would help to ensure that once these women are working, they would receive the same pay, benefits, training, opportunity, and opportunity for advancement. It is essential that we create a level playing field where all workers, regardless of their race or gender, can thrive and contribute to the success of our community. Additionally, the CWA would help our community access Earn Will You Learn apprenticeship opportunities. These programs are crucial for developing skilled workforce and helping individuals gain invaluable experience while they earn a living wage. By investing in our community's workforce, we are investing in the future of San Bernardino. Not everyone is destined for college, but through apprenticeship, they can still become contributing members of our society. It's important to clarify that a community workforce agreement does not require union membership for contractors to bid on the work. The race of the contractor has no impact on their ability to bid on the projects. Instead, it establishes a standard for the quality of work that's being performed. If a contractor chooses not to bid due to a CWA being in place, it's often a reflection of their assessment of profit margins rather than their inability to participate in bidding on the work. This decision underscores the importance of setting high standards for our projects, ensuring that our community benefits from quality contractors who value their workforce enough to meet the standards set forth by this community workforce agreement. In conclusion, I urge San Bernardino City Unified School District to adopt a community workforce agreement. By doing so, we can create a more equitable, skilled, and empowered workforce that reflects the diversity and potential of our community. Together, we can build a brighter future for San Bernardino. Thank you for your time and consideration.
Good evening, Board. My name is Shane Cox, and I am the president of our local NICA chapter. NICA is an association of electrical contractors, and I'm here to represent them in partnership with our brothers and sisters of the IDEW. As Vanessa stated, this is not a union program. This is a community workforce agreement, and it's an honor to stand before you today to support your decision to consider a community workforce agreement. These agreements are not just policies, they are powerful tools that ensure economic opportunities are shared fairly, that the workers are treated with dignity, and that our community can thrive together. As a local, third-generation electrical contractor right here in San Bernardino, I, myself, I not only work here in San Bernardino, but I reside here as well, and I wholeheartedly welcome a community workforce agreement that prioritizes local hiring, fair wages, and safe working conditions. One that ensures when public funds are used for infrastructure and development projects, the benefits stay largely within our own community. These agreements set clear standards for job quality and training opportunities. I support this CWA because it makes good economic sense and good moral sense. Too often, large projects bring in outside labor, leaving local workers struggling to find opportunities. The CWAs require contractors to prioritize hiring from within the communities where the projects are taking place. This means more jobs for local residents, more income circulating back into our neighborhoods, and a stronger, more stable family. Additionally, CWAs emphasize workforce development. They create pathways for apprenticeship and job training programs, opening the doors for our young people to grow, adapt, and succeed. This is an investment in people, leading to long-term prosperity for our community. Imagine just for a moment the possibility of one of your own, very own, students in the next graduating class this summer, having the opportunity to join a local trade apprenticeship, and that same student further being given the opportunity to participate in the next modernization, perhaps even the same high school they may have graduated from. We've already seen the value and success of CWAs. Neighboring districts that have implemented these agreements report higher employment rates for local workers, improved workforce training, and stronger local economies. These agreements are not just about construction projects, they are about building futures. So tonight, I encourage you as the leaders and decision-makers of this district to stand and in support of implementing a community workforce agreement. Together, we can make a difference and make our community stronger, our workforce more skilled, and our local economy more resilient. Together, we can make hope happen. Thank you for your time and consideration.
Thank you. And can you do me a favor? Can you move the mic up higher to, thank you.
Is that better? All right. Good evening, Board, Superintendent and Board members. My name is Omar Cobian. I'm a representative for the Western State Regional Council of Carpenters, representing over 12,000 members that live in the Inland Empire and close to 800 that live in San Bernardino. Well, I have a lot of, a lot of things going through my head right now, but I want to start by addressing number one. A couple of years ago, in '23, Riverside Unified School District started their CWA committee. They went through months of different committees and, for community meetings, and at the end of the day, it passed unanimous for one reason, with very conservative board members on that panel. And I was there throughout the whole process. And what I witnessed was the fact that the facts don't lie. For the gentleman prior stating that the cost of construction went up by 20%, 30%, that's a lie. So let me explain. A CWA is a, is a deliberal cost. Anywhere from 1% to 1.5% that's already put into the compliance component that you guys actually put as 3%. So unless the contractors are ripping you off, or the cost of material or labor goes up, that's a lie. It's prevailing wage, it's the same wage. That's the difference. So these scare tactics are constant. I'm sure all of you got tons of emails over the weekend. We know how it works. And the board members, RUSD, got the same emails. I'd love to, I wish, Board member, the Board member from Riverside would be here to explain what happened with that. I wanted to share a little bit about Riverside Community College. Passed the CWA in 2010. The Riverside Community College District, an analysis that provides an overall view of the results of the tabulation of the PLA that was in place at RCD between 2010 and 2015, and covered their bond measure, Measure C. I included this because it provides a summary of all contractors, union and non-union, who were awarded contracts for the covered projects. 61% went to the non-union contractors, which provides evidence that PLA's are not biased. Agreements, and that they only somehow hinder non-union contractors unable sufficiently complete for PLA-covered contracts. Also, it highlights the labor compliance benefit derived from PLA. Labor compliance monitoring achievements equates to, equated to $178,000 in worker wage recovery as a result of prevailing wage violations that were identified, investigated, and resolved through the provisions contained within the PLA. Additionally, it highlighted the effectiveness of local hire provisions of the agreement. 62% of workers were local hire. I could go on and on. And by the way, it was over 5,000 workers that worked throughout that PLA, our five years. At the end of the day, what people don't realize is that, as representatives, we go to these job sites, we talk to the workers. And what happens sometimes on prevailing wage jobs is that they tend to be exploited. One of the common themes is, if I'm a worker working on a prevailing wage job, my foreman would come up to me and say, hey, if you want to work on this prevailing wage job, making the $60, $70, the end of the week, you're going to pay me a little something, or I'm going to send you to the other job for $25. Same company. So the same companies. On that note, that same contractor can pay the prevailing wage without paying any benefits. No retirement, no medical. Who pays for the medical at the end of the day? The taxpayers subsidize those same contractors. They fight these PLA's because they exploit workers. We have videos, we have evidence of prevailing wage jobs on a regular basis. That's what we do. Every project in the Inland Empire is covered by us. That's what we do. The carpenters, we check, we talk to workers. So this is a compliance effort to make sure that we have that third party that dots the i's and crosses the t's and puts the youth of San Bernardino first. I rest my case. Thank you.
Members of the Board, Superintendents, community of San Bernardino, I would like to thank you for the time this evening. I am David Mount, and I hold card number 8555692 within the International Brotherhood of Electrical Workers, or IBW. And I'm currently enrolled in a fourth, as a fourth-year apprentice at the Inland Empire Electrical Training Center, IETC, that is located here in San Bernardino, just off of, I believe, Watermelon, Waterman and the 10 freeway. I started at the electrical field back in Dallas, Texas of 2018. I worked for a private, non-signatory company called Electric Pros that operated by a Justin Klump. While both parties, while it was known by both parties that I had no prior electrical knowledge, it would not be uncommon for me to be left on the job site alone. Not only was this an unsafe practice, but I would, as an apprentice, I was put into these unsafe positions with no knowledge of it being so. Along with this, I would also not receive a check in a professional or timely manner, and after months of repeated treatment this way, I parted ways with Electric Pros. And being homeless, with a family, wife and kids, had no choice but to move back here to California. With now virtually zero electrical knowledge and poor high school transcript, I was given the opportunity that I did not believe possible. The IETC Board looked past my immature school record and let my interest aptitude test, as well as my interview, show who I was and what I could truly be capable of. Since being an apprentice, I have seen and experienced a career far beyond what I thought would be achievable. I feel confident and secure in the training I receive. I am no longer left alone on a job site with no immediate competent person, and between the IBW and IETC, I do not have to worry about receiving my checks. Most of the, or, most of all, to me personally, I am able to have a strong, secure sense of pride and skills that I have gained and acquired at the IETC, IETC. I not only believe that San Bernardino should be built on skilled and competent labor, I believe that the IETC is the correct school to uphold the vision that we all see for this city. If the CWA was to pass, it would ensure that the community has a chance to receive the same opportunities that I did. I once again thank everyone at tennis for your time, and the Board for the floor.
Hello, Board. How you guys doing? My name is Gregory Temple, and I'm a member of IBW Local 477. And this is my home. I've been out here since 1970. As a matter of fact, Danny, I was in the choir at New Hope Missionary Baptist Church with you when I was young. And as you look around, all the people in the back, this is their home. And we, what we do is we take care of home. And the gentleman that was speaking from WICA, where are they at? You know, are you coming to get the money and leaving? Let me tell you some of the things that the IBW does alone. We're in every single high school's creating pathway programs to get kids to have honest, hard-working jobs that can take care of their families. And you might not know this either, we even started a program called ERP, which I'm the director of. It is called Electrical Reentry Program, where we take people that are just finished getting incarcerated, and we train them to 12 to 13 months, and we actually put them in line to get a job into the apprenticeship program. Where's WICA in this? Where's ABC in this? Okay? We do so much for the community, we give back to them. And also too, the gentleman was talking about how it's not diverse in the unions. I'm a business rep now. A long time ago, about 40 years ago, I was in the streets of San Bernardino. I was facing 28 years of fed time, and luckily I beat my case. But it was the IBW that brought me in. And I have a pension and retirement that is so big right now that I'm successful. I'm one of those stories that you hear about of somebody changing their life around, and I couldn't have done it without the union. I guarantee you that. So we're not just here to take money, we're giving back to the community. We've been giving back to the community. The IBW is always going to be here. It's been around since, I guess, 1892, and it's going to continue giving back to the community. And thank you guys for even considering a CWA because it means a lot. Everybody you see back here is local. This is their backyard. This is their home. And so thank you very much.
Good evening, School Board, Superintendent Ariano, Cabinet, Student Trustees, Chief Polino, Joe Salas, former teacher at San Bernardino High School. When I want to look for inspiration, oftentimes I look at Dr. Funches's LinkedIn account. And I pulled a quote off there from his account that said, "True leaders do not lead for recognition, but they lead to make a lasting impact." This evening, you have a chance to make that lasting impact. I have some people in the community here, like Dr. Rodriguez, who's off the dais, who grew up in San Bernardino, Mr. Ariano, Mr. Tillman, who've been here for 40-plus years. They were kids here. And you can remember, and, and Vice President Grande, your, your memories do not fool you. When you were children, and walking around in downtown San Bernardino, it was the place to be. It was a thriving community. And last year, William Lampley from the, from the city of San Bernardino, in the city manager's office said, he gave a little synopsis of the history of, of what became the economic decay of our community. And guess what? It had to do with the slow erosion between the 1970s and early 80s, when 30,000 union jobs left this community. 30,000 union jobs. And now you can see what we got, okay? When I'm looking at the San Bernardino shines footprint, the, the map that we have to go forward as a community, as a, as a school district, I look at the themes of collaboration, human potential, collaboration. That is these people in this room right here. I don't know who he was, he's gone. I mean, I wish he would have stayed, I would have loved to talk to the man, doesn't matter, he's his point of view. But I can tell you this, there are now 30 students at San Bernardino High School with the IBW program, under the leadership of Mrs. Sosa and the visionary leadership of John Wingo. We have 30 students there now. Two of them African-American, 25%, 25, 24 Latinx students, and I believe two women. Last year, we had 17 students. The entire school board was there, I believe, minus Mr. Tillman. My bad, I will invite you again next year, Mr. Tillman, be, be there for the graduation. I can even attest to Mr. Pratt. We are in community. We are even in schools that are not a part of San Bernardino City Unified. Mr. Pratt came to talk to a young man with exceptional needs at RJAA Academy, trying to get him on the right path, over there in Fontana. They go wherever young people are. And we've already had many testimonies that the unions save their life. There, there is nothing wrong with a community workforce agreement. The starting salaries for a community workforce, for the operator engineers, these guys here in the middle, $36. That's with no college, being 19-years-old, making $36 an hour, five more dollars an hour, based off full-time benefits, $41 an hour. That's almost more than I make right now. I might have to give up my career. $20, $24 an hour, starting with IBW. Any agreement that goes forward will benefit this community. It's, it's called cyclical economics. The money stays in the community. It doesn't go off to some contractor who will never be here in this community again, except unless he has, he or she has to do business again. I highly urge you to pass this. I'm, I'm just, I'm, I'm, I'm just happy that we're even here as a community. The fact that it's even on this, on this, thank you for that, because I know that takes courage. And it started about four years ago, talking with IBW, with Gwen Rogers, and having some conversations with Mr. Koenig and other people in the community to get this to you guys. So I want to thank you even for considering this, and that's all I have to say. Thank you very much for entertaining us, and I appreciate everything you do for us.
Thank you so much. That's it. Alrighty, we have Mr. Tillman.
Thank you very much, and thank you all for coming out tonight. You know, tonight we did get an email, and there were some concerns listed in it. And I contacted, some of you might remember Tony Dupree. Tony Dupree used to be on the School World with us. But I, I met him years ago, probably 38 years ago, at the county of San Bernardino. He was an engineer technician. But he's been in construction his whole life, still doing it. And I called him and asked him about the concerns, and he said, Danny, the PLA is a great thing. And he worked on the one for, I think he said Riverside Community College. And one of the things that struck me was, he said, when a, a person works on one of the jobs, then they get into the retirement system, and each time they do a job, they get credit in the retirement system, which is a big deal. You know, a lot of young folks don't realize the value of a defined benefits retirement. I know because I retired from the county of San Bernardino, and it's a defined benefits program. Only 8% of the people in the country are afforded a defined benefits retirement. So I know what a big deal it is, and I know what it means to, it would mean to the folks in our community. So after the discussion with Tony Dupree, because he's a straight shooter, and I have a lot of trust in him, and I don't have trust in a lot of people. But it, it made me feel 100% confident that what we're doing tonight is a good thing. So I'd like to make a motion to approve.
I'll second that. Did you have a comment, or did you, was it just the motion?
I was going to comment too, but that, I definitely wanted to motion it.
Okay, so we have a motion by Mr. Tillman, and we have a second by Ms. Medina. Vote, please.
Aye.
Oh, sorry. Thank you. Motion passes. Thank you so much, everyone, for coming out. We appreciate you waiting, sticking around, bringing this information forward, and, you know, we're really excited to have partnership with you guys, and we look forward to all the great things that are going to come out of this. And so thank you so much, and I will, Ms. Medina?
Yes, and you know, I got really excited, didn't really get a chance to comment, but this is a great thing for San Bernardino. I am just so happy and excited. You know, it's, there was reasons, I even wrote down a whole thing I was going to say, reasons why this was so important. But I'm just really proud of our board. I'm proud of our, our district, our students, our staff, our, our community, everyone here that waited this long to still stay and speak on, on the issues. I did want to acknowledge Ben, who's, who's been advocating since the beginning as well, and even Mark, Gwen Rogers, yes. Even, even Gwen Rogers, back in the day, we had these conversations, and I know I've been having this conversation since 2014, actually 13, and been receiving pushback. Oh, no, you can't do this, Abigail, you can't do this, you know, it's, and then realizing that, yes, we can do this. And so it took a long time to finally start hearing the board asking questions as well. Like, oh, good, we have some more support, and this is just perfect timing. I appreciate everyone that's here tonight again. And, you know, we're going to move San Bernardino forward, and it's, and it's a great example for the city to follow as well.
Thank you so much. And did you want to comment? Sorry, Ms. Grande was before you.
I just want to say thank you for your eloquence in your speaking, your passion, your heart. I mean, I was just like, you had me from hello, you know? You really did. Thank you, I honor you always. Thank you.
Mr. Tillman?
Yeah, when I, when I talked to Mr. Dupree tonight, he told me to have a program in LA, associated with their PLA called Hire LA, or LA Hire. Anybody know what it's called? Hire LA? So we had to have a Hire San Bernardino.
Ms. Alexander?
I'd just like to say, as Abigail said, this is very instrumental for San Bernardino, and we really just appreciate the intentionality, just coming out here explaining and really just expressing your concern and your int- and really just expressing your concern and your intention to see us grow. And most importantly, for our scholars, we really appreciate it. Having an opportunity to speak to some of you and just what you've expressed, but also get to know you. I know that you mean and you walk your talk. So thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Santos?
Wanted to make a comment that our country was at its greatest when our unions were the strongest. So if you go back into our past, it's been a while. But yeah, you know, unions are important because a lot of the labor laws that have come in through this country work because of unions.
Thank you. And since everybody has kind of commented, Dr. Wyatt, did you want to make a comment?
Yeah, sure. Thank you, Madam President. And just congratulations to everyone. I know I'm not there personally tonight, and I'm up here with the district, representing our team up here in San Jose. But I just want to say thank you to Ben, Omar, Jeffrey, a lot of folks we've been working with. And most importantly, you know, I really look forward to the future of our children, our students. What an exciting time for San Bernardino. I've always said this, that the school district, we lead the city as a catalyst of change. And I truly believe this is going to be an excellent, outstanding relationship moving forward with the building trades and all the different unions that we work with. It's just tremendous opportunity for our students, our families, the city of San Bernardino. And I'll tell you what, a great thing is going to happen. Thank you, everyone, for everybody involved, and thank you to the board for supporting this as well.
Once again, thank you all so much for coming and being persistent and advocating. We look forward to doing great things together. Moving on, a recommendation has also been made to move nine point two up as well. So I will now turn over to the board for consensus on moving that item up. Do I have consensus? Mary Ellen Santos? Yes. Okay. So nine point two, resolution approving the charter renewal for Entrepreneur High School. I got it. On October tenth, twenty twenty-four, Randall Chostran? Josh Stran, thank you. Lead petitioner for Entrepreneur High School submitted a charter renewal petition to the charter school operations department. A public hearing was conducted on December seventeenth, twenty twenty-four to consider the level of support for the charter petition. Yet resolved, the Board of Education approves the charter renewal petition for Entrepreneur High School for a term of July first, twenty twenty-five, through June thirty, twenty thirty.
Move.
Second. It's been moved by Mr. Tillman and second by Ms. Medina. Vote, please.
Aye.
Motion passed. Okay, so the motion has passed. And so typically, I don't have a section in front of me for additional comments, but someone wanted to...
If you want to talk.
Yes. Did someone want to come up? Yeah.
Good morning, board members. My name is Ian Castillo. I'm a senior at Entrepreneur High School. And I'm not too sure what to say, but one thing I do want to say is, Entrepreneur High School has helped me a lot by, I have my own business. It's called Make It Out. Well, we focus on encouraging the youth to set their goals high and become things that they don't really see on a daily basis. So I just want to thank Entrepreneur High School for that opportunity to become something that I myself did not think that I could become. So thank you.
Hello, Board President and Board Members. My name is Ganam Moreno. I am a senior at Entrepreneur High School. I just want to say thank you guys so much for allowing me to come up here and speak. I honestly don't know where I would be in my life if it wasn't for the opportunity that they had to offer me. I was a straight F student through freshman, all the way till about senior year, until I really took notice into what they had to offer for me. And now, honestly, I'm a straight A student with a four point O. I just want to say thank you so much for the opportunity you guys have to offer me. It's more than family, it feels like. Thank you so much.
Hello, Board Members, Board President. Just to bounce off of what my peers were saying, Entrepreneur High School, it's way more than a school. It's a family here. The opportunities they have been able to provide, not only myself, but my peers, have just been just various and really exciting. Going into high school, I kind of knew what I wanted to do. But then going through a lot of the trials and tribulations at Entrepreneur High School, they've been able to guide me and really hone in on what my strengths were and what was really fitting for my career. And not just what a lot of people were telling me, like a certain route that you have to go. This is a certain path that you have to take. Entrepreneur High School pushes innovation, pushes creativity, and pushes a lot of pathways that students can take. And I just want to say I'm really appreciative to the community that we've created at Entrepreneur High School. And thank you guys for allowing us to come up here and advocate for our school because though we're, as we stated previously, though we're a small school, we are a mighty school, and we're going to grow so much more. And thank you for giving us the opportunity to have conferences like this so our community and our school can grow even more. So thank you, E-Hi, and thank you, Board Member, Board President, for letting us speak up here today.
Good afternoon. I don't have too much to say, but thank you for letting everybody that is in the younger class, you know, come to Entrepreneur because it changed minds, it changed everybody else, and they're going to have a good experience there, because like has Ian and Ganam say, it's like a family, for sure. Good night.
I'm Joshua Garcia. Thank you, guys, for letting me speak. I also have a business. It's Potentia Vision. It's a web design and basically online marketing business. So Entrepreneur High has helped me a lot with officiating the business, with different things I needed for the business, I guess. It's my first year here, so they helped me a lot. Thank you.
Thank you. Congratulations. All right, so now I'm going to go back up to eight point O, Administrative Reports and Presentations, eight point one, Data-Driven Grading Practices. And I will turn it over to Mrs. Applegate.
Thank you. Good evening, Board President Ceballos, Vice President Abelés Grande, Board, Mr. Ariano, Cabinet, and our audience. I'm really honored and excited to bring our presentation on effective-based approach to grading. So what you will see tonight is a collaboration that we have with Dr. Douglas Reeves, who's a renowned educator, you know, worldwide, actually, especially around grading practices. And I think you're going to see that grading practices are so much more than that old DNF report that you used to get. That used to be the old presentation. We'll see how effective grading practices can really be foundational and a catalyst to quality teaching and learning. So I will turn it over to Dr. Venkatesan, and she'll talk a little bit more about how proud we are of our teachers, who have been the leaders in the movement for this grading practice, along with our district staff. You can see here, we have a fantastic, superhuman team here that has also helped with grading practices. So I will go ahead and hand it over to her.
Good evening, President Ceballos, Superintendent Ariano, Board Members, Cabinet, Parents, and Community Members. I am Sudha Venkatesan, Director of Secondary Education and College and Career. I would like to recognize my team of administrators here today. Dr. Kumie, Assistant Director for Curriculum and Instruction. Dr. Kay, if you please stand. I want the board to know the incredible team that I have. Dr. Kay, Assistant Director for Career and Technical Education. Ms. Simpson, Coordinator for Curriculum and Instruction, and Ms. Ramirez, Coordinator for Work-Based Learning. And I also have many of our dedicated program specialists and staff that are with us today. Please stand to please get recognized. This is a mighty team. And I also want to acknowledge our Ed Services colleagues who are here as a support, site administrators, and our high school executive board member for SBTA, Ms. Roberta Figueroa. Please stand if you're here. And every one of them has been involved in this grading practices work in some way. So I just wanted to make sure that it is a collective work from everyone. Next slide, please. The objective of today's presentation is to present the DNF rates, analyze the key trends and insights from the data, its impact on the graduation rate, and discuss next steps. As highlighted in the research here, a rising GPA is a strong predictor of college graduation than standardized test scores, which underscores the importance of the grading practices work that we have undertaken. GPA also reflects key social-emotional skills, such as perseverance and grit, traits that are very essential for both college success and beyond. And according to the findings, when students work to improve their GPA, they develop that consistency and determination across tests, projects, and daily assignments. It is this persistence that truly sets them up for success in higher education and in life beyond high school. I would like to begin this presentation by emphasizing to the board and our audience that California Ed Code grants teachers full autonomy over grading. As Mrs. Applegate mentioned, any efforts that we make in our district to address grading practices is built upon a foundation of utmost respect for Ed Code and teacher autonomy. For far too long, our school systems have relied on traditional grading methods that view grades as a mere calculation of numbers. Our goal with grading practices in our district is to introduce innovative approaches that research has shown can significantly enhance students' effectiveness, sense of hope, trust, and agency. Achieving this shift in mindset about grading will take time. It's not simply about changing how grades are calculated. It's about transforming how we view the learning process as a whole. This requires a cultural shift within our schools, which is slow, hard work. But we are committed to doing this with our teachers and not to them in a truly collaborative way. It's an ongoing process, and though it takes time, we believe it is essential for creating the lasting positive changes our students need. These progressive grading strategies are vital part of high-quality teaching and learning, and we will continue to assess their impact to ensure that we are meeting the needs of all learners. In the years leading up to COVID-19 pandemic, our district made significant strides in reforming grading practices with a strong emphasis on professional development and guidance from experts like Doug Reeves on best practices. And our board has placed tremendous priority over the grading practices work. I know many of you are sitting here right now who has been part of this from the beginning. However, the onset of the pandemic in 2020 disrupted this progress as we quickly shifted to virtual learning, froze grade books, and adjusted credit requirements to accommodate the new reality of online education. During this time, learning gaps widened, and the continuity of grading-focused professional development was interrupted. In the aftermath, after we returned to in-person instruction and adapt to a changing educational landscape, our primary focus has been to address these gaps while managing the challenges of high staff turnover and the onboarding of new school leaders. Recognizing the difficulty of gathering all staff for professional development to the district, Mrs. Applegate has implemented a strategy of pushing training directly into the schools. Through a partnership with Creative Leadership Solutions, consultants have been deployed to provide site-specific support tailored to the needs of individual schools. While progress has been slow due to varied teacher readiness and turnover, we are still continuing to do this important work. And some schools have made big strides, such as eliminating zeros and embracing mastery-based grading. The goal remains clear, to create grading systems that truly support student growth, mastery, and success while fostering trust and agency within our school communities. At the high school level, we have seen a decrease in DNF grades, indicating the positive impact of our grading reform efforts. We see a slight increase at the middle school level. While much of our work has been concentrated on high schools, we are now accelerating our efforts at the middle school level as well. This progress is driven by hundred-and-ninety teachers who have adopted innovative practices rather than just tracking points. I will explain further down the presentation what those innovative practices are. Schools like Pacific High School and Indian Springs High School have made significant strides in reducing the DNFs, demonstrating the effectiveness of these efforts. Math and English Language Arts have seen the greatest reduction in failing grades, underscoring the importance of students being successful in these critical subject areas. These trends show we are heading in the right direction, and we will continue to refine and expand our approach across the district. We will now go into the high school data. This graph presents the grade distribution of students in grades nine through twelve over the past two years. Has shown there has been a steady increase in As and Bs, while Cs, Ds, and Fs have been on the decline. This shift highlights the effectiveness of the grading support systems, which gives students more opportunities to showcase their learning and improve their outcomes. Unlike standardized tests, which only capture performance at a single moment of time and that don't allow for course correction, our approach fosters continuous improvement and growth. This graph consolidates the high school DNF percentages from the previous gap to offer a clearer perspective on the overall trend. This slide displays DNF rates for core subjects, math, ELA, science, and history, to provide a clearer understanding of where these trends are most prominent. Notably, the most significant reductions in DNF grades are observed in math and in ELA. This graph highlights DNF rates across different student groups, revealing consistent trend among most populations. The only exception is the two-or-more-racist category, which slows, shows a slight increase in the DNF rates. As I mentioned previously, this is not the work of just... As I mentioned previously, this is not the work of just secondary department, but also the efforts of ETSA and multilingual departments being intentional with providing interventions and support and creating a collective impact for all our student groups. As an example, ETSA under the leadership of Dr. Greer is bringing the high school counselors together to review 750 transcripts for African-American students to look at the DNF rates so we can see how we can provide support for our students. That's what we talk about as a continuous growth process. This graph represents DNF rates across different high schools. Importantly, all high schools saw a decline in DNF rates with the exception of Cajon High School. However, it is very important to note that Cajon's rates remain significantly lower than those of other schools in both years. This graph compares the graduation rate with the F rates, illustrating how a decrease in F contributed to increase in graduation rates. So I'm going to stop here. Should I continue with the middle school data? Or if you have questions, this is just high school data.
Do we have any, Ms. Medina?
I just have one. I just noticed that for Cajon High School, there was an increase in DNF for the for 2020, for this last year. Is there, and I'm sure you're going to talk about it later, what are the
The homeless?
The DNFs, is it a page? Or maybe, I'm sorry, Cajon High School. What did I say? Cajon High School.
Yeah.
So how it's increased, the Ds and Fs had increased for the last year, just slightly, not too much.
Yes.
I was just wondering if there's already conversations of what that's going to look like to see why an increase and so forth.
So, thank you for asking that question. Just last week, the principal personally reached out to me, and he has been a big proponent of this work in his previous district. And so he said, I want to continue this work there collaboratively with our teachers, and I want to know like what we can do and what are the next steps. Because again, as I mentioned, there is a lot of turnover among our leaders, and there is a lot of those trainings that we brought to the administrators and also our teachers that they were not, they didn't have it. But since he has already done the work, we are going to collaborate with him and help him. But the mindset is there, and you know, and he is, he's already working on the culture, and there is beautiful culture at Cajon Middle School right now. So it's perfect.
Thank you.
You can move forward.
Continue? Okay. So, middle school data. This graph illustrates the distribution of grades over the past two years for students in our middle schools. Has shown we have seen an increase in the As, Ds, and Fs. While the number of Bs and Cs has declined, according to this. To address this, we are focusing on improving grading practices at the middle school level. I want to specifically note here, most of our trainings have been just with our high school teachers, and we are just starting to have this training with the middle schools. We will specifically provide targeted training for a large number of new staff members as well at the middle school level, so they are equipped with the tools and the strategies that's needed to effectively implement these grading reforms. By pushing this effort into the middle school, we are sure that we are going to be decreasing the, you know, the Ds and Fs in the next year to come. The next one is this graph consolidates the middle school DNF percentages from the previous graph, and it does show a slight increase. It's pretty much close to one percentage point. Next graph. Okay, this graph shows the DNF rates for the core subjects. Math shows a decline, mirroring the overall reduction just like as in high school. However, the trends in the other core subjects differ, pointing to the area that requires further investigation on targeted attention to better support student success. This graph highlights the variation in DNFs across different middle school student groups. A positive trend is observed with drops in DNF rates among African-American, American Indian, special education, and homeless students, groups that are often the most challenging to see improvement in. However, the other student groups show a slight increase in the DNF rates. This graph highlights the variation in DNF rates across different middle schools, demonstrating that trends are not consistent across all campuses. While some schools have experienced a decline in DNF rates, others show fluctuations, indicating that each school may face unique challenges and opportunities for improvement. This is the end. Before I go to the next steps, any questions on this, or I can conclude this?
I think you can move forward.
So, next steps, we will be continuing the professional development support for teachers on those innovative practices, and we'll also continue to provide site-specific support through the Creative Leadership Solutions. So what are those innovative grading practices? Immediate and relevant feedback. Providing that immediate and relevant feedback is crucial for student growth. When students receive timely feedback, they can quickly understand their mistakes and make adjustments, leading to improved performance. Scale scoring. It allows us to assess students based on their mastery of the material and their progress over time rather than focusing on a single test or assignment. A zero eliminating the zero. A zero can disproportionately affect a student's grade, especially in courses where one assignment might represent a significant portion of their grade. Instead of a zero, we focus on allowing students to retake assessments or complete additional work to better reflect their understandings of the material. And when students know they have dedicated time to reassess and improve, they are more likely to adopt a positive mindset and growth mindset, understanding that learning is a continuous process and mistakes are a part of it. So, what you see on the screen is the type of work CLS is doing with us. This chart outlines key areas where associates are providing support to teacher teams, focusing on curriculum, instruction, assessment, data, and MTSS. As you can see, the components listed here are not just impacting grading practices. This is high-quality teaching and learning, and that's what they have a comprehensive approach to how they support school sites. So at this time, I come to an end of the presentation, and I do want to welcome Ms. Mercer. Or do you have questions for me before she comes on?
Just hold on one second. Ms. Medina?
Yeah, no, I just wanted to say thank you for the report. It's always good for us to kind of see and review what, you know, what's going on. And the fact that you're looking at it and you're being fully transparent, and that's okay, because then what can we do to help improve from there on? So I really do appreciate the presentation, the data, and I'm sure the other board members also do appreciate that. Thank you.
Thank you.
Ms. Alexander?
I also appreciate the overview and just the process and how you presented it to us in terms of the methodology. One of the questions I have in terms of the innovative methods, have any of these been used at the schools where we see, particularly in the middle school where we've seen improvements?
There are few schools, there are few teachers that voluntarily participated when this work started. After this was interrupted because of the COVID, we have to start all over again with, because there is a lot of turnover at the middle school level, more than high school. So because of that, it is all about training new teachers. Pretty much, I think I was actually talking to Dr. Funches, more than 20% of our workforce in secondary, they are new. And also, there is a change in leadership. So everybody, it's very important for principals to understand that this is a truly a collaborative work and knowing, understanding the Ed Code. So it is all about training and retraining. So that is the challenge. So I'm sure like we have very dedicated principals who want to do everything right by the students, and many great, amazing teachers at the middle schools. I have no doubt that we are definitely going to see some movement there.
And Dr. Venkatesan, if I may, you will be hearing from one of our principals, Ms. Alexander, specifically on that, because they have made some great gains with reduction in DNF, and she will be talking to you about some of the strategies.
Because that was going to be my next question about the student groups, if there was a strategy behind the focus on student groups for different schools.
As I mentioned, it's a, we are looking at it as a long-term, continuous growth process. We can't just look at the standardized test and, you know, assume that the students have not learned, because each one, they learn at their own trajectory. And this kind of grading practices is not about just, I'm giving you a test, you fail, you fail. It's about teachers giving those opportunities, retake the test. You want to come in the evenings for you to have the extra tutoring. Is there a different way you can show your learning? So those are all part of these innovative grading practices, and it is very strongly supported by research.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Marilla, Ms. Grande?
Yes, I have a couple of things. I'm really glad to see and hear this because, well, you know, I've been a teacher in our district for 20 years, and I get comments often from teachers that are in the field, and they complain and they say, our principal, you know, this is the feeling they get. We have, we hear time and time again about bringing these grades up and they don't, I think that that the important thing is to get the grade up, not whether or not the teacher, the student deserves this, in their own words. And I, we get a lot of talks on how to bring up their grades, but in the end, we're led to feel, I feel, this is their words, I feel that what they really want is to change their grades so then it can make, you know, the school look better. So my concern is, this is a wonderful, beautiful message. Is it getting to the teachers in the classroom who maybe don't get to see such a wonderful program? You know, I would like to see that actually none for the teachers at their school site so the principals can use, see, you know, you know, we're all in this together, and this is the reason, is because it's not about the grade, it's about the learning journey, and it's not about the grade to make us look good or so then we can all look good in the eyes of the district in our area, but because of the learning. And maybe that's, the wires are getting crossed and teachers are feeling put upon that. I'm just going to share that with you. You know, it saddens me because I know it's not, it's not true. I don't know. So maybe the words aren't there, or maybe they're tired at the end of the day, right? So I don't respond, I usually just send it on to Anna or a superintendent. I don't ever respond to it, but they know.
I hear you. One of the things that Mrs. Applegate and, you know, our superintendent Ariana has always stressed is we have to understand the teacher autonomy first. So this is about a shift in the culture and shift in the mindset. So we have to make sure that they are partners in this work. And when you have to shift mindset and look at, because it is, people are so comfortable using what they are, you know, what they know, right? So it is our responsibility to show, you get the same thing. Students, you're not just giving grades out, but students can exhibit learning differently. We have a different process in which grading can be shown, their mastery can be shown. And we have to take into account, different students have different trajectories in how they learn and acquire mastery. So, as I mentioned, there's a lot of new administrators as well as, so it is upon us to make sure that we bring them together and give them those trainings. And also, it is very important, this is, to be very transparent with you, this requires a very nuanced conversation with our teachers. So, knowing that, you know, at no time the conversation should be teachers walking away thinking, no, they are asking me to do the grades, which I understand, that's what you're alluding to. I absolutely say that is not how we are approaching this. We want teachers to be part of this conversation. We want teachers to use this, because it has to come within. That change is what we are working on. That is why it has been a slow process.
So it's wonderful. And then the other one, I'm just wondering, you know, those Ds and Fs, do students get an opportunity for recovery or to retake or relearn any portions of these subject matters they did poorly in? Can Ds and Fs be replaced, like say with our college coursework? When I got a bad grade, I was able to take it again in the semester and replaced it with a good grade.
That is exactly our conversation. Giving multiple opportunities for student success is our conversation.
Mr. Santos?
I'm getting used to this, so work with me. Let's tackle you. Student accountability is important, right? My question was, is this training for all teachers mandatory? Is it something they volunteer for? How many teachers are receiving this training?
So our work is guided by Ed Code, and as I mentioned previously, teachers have full autonomy over grading. That's what the Ed Code says. So that doesn't stop us from educating the teachers on different ways we can grade, different practices that have shown, that has shown in the research to really help student growth. So that is the work that we are doing. We are not taking away, and we are not telling them how to grade, but we are saying, we are exposing and introducing them, look, there are so many other ways you can show the mastery and understanding, and these are the things, and this is supported by research. Our teachers are always open when you show evidence-based research and when they so. Because everybody comes into the profession knowing, I want my students to be successful. So we use that as our foundational piece and work with our teachers and expose them to all these best evidences. That's how change happens. You cannot mandate this training because it is shift, we work on the mindset shift.
Mr. Santos, right now, teachers are opting in, it is not mandatory. So we're hoping to bring them along.
Thank you.
There are 365 teachers at this point of time who have participated and using some form of alternate grading. And we do see some, that is why, the data speaks. Some things, they are going on, and the data, and more of the high school teachers have attended this, and you see that improvement in the grades.
Thank you. Again, I'll use the excuse that I'm new to this, so I'm understanding how this process works. That was my question. Thank you.
Thank you so much, and I also just want to thank you for sharing this great information. Just to kind of piggyback off a little bit of what has been asked. You said, how many teachers are participating currently? 300 what?
Currently around, we have a total of 365 teachers.
And roughly, where are they coming from? What school sites?
Mostly from high schools. I don't have the breakdown, but I can definitely provide for you.
Is it somewhat like evenly disproportionate, like a spread out? Or do we have some coming more from one side than the other?
There could be coming more from one side. I just don't want to speak without the data in front of me. But it is again voluntary, and we advertise. And, you know, we bring Doug Reeves, who pretty much resonates with many teachers because he has done a lot of reform work with grading. So we have advertised and we have done workshops. And we have now those Creative Leadership Solution consultants who have been working with teacher teams and, you know, looking at tier-one instruction. They're looking at a very comprehensive look, and then this grading becomes one of the part of the discussions with our teachers.
Does this training happen at the district offices or at the school sites? Is it facilitated alongside with principals? Or is it something that the district department employees, like in your case, your department, facilitate? Those are how, just to get a little bit more of an idea?
So when we began, everything was centered in the district office. We had close to, I remember in the very first year, at least six different meetings where Doug Reeves was actually present, and he walked them through the data, he walked them through like how easy it is because teachers, you work hard, but you know, you work a little differently with supporting them. You're going to get like, you know, teachers are going to be the first one that are going to be happy when they see their students successful more than anybody. So it is all about giving those alternate. So it is all about giving those alternate, I, guiding, guidance on how you can do those grading. So we did do in, at the district office and then, as I mentioned to you, pandemic interrupted this training. And these are not conversations that will really work well in an online setting. So it was very important for us to take it again back when we get back after the pandemic. And you know the focus of what happened like after when we can, came back. So there was a lot more that we needed to focus on and teachers had a lot to learn. And completely, we had to rewire to the different landscape. So now for the past two years, that's why I came, I brought the two years data. And then Superintendent Ariana has been very supportive and he has very high regards for Dr. Reeves. And, you know, with, with all the support, we are again restarting this work. And board has been the biggest proponent, it has always been the top 10 priority.
So is it now happening at the school sites? So is it now happening at the school sites?
It's happening at all the school sites in high school, except one where I can talk about, but you know, she helped. The principal is already hitting it out of the park and, you know. At some point, the consultant's work is done and the leader has to take and move on with it. I know, you know, Dr. Raymundo is at that point where she can drive that vision in her homeschool. So that's a, that's a, that is, that is our thing, like the consultants are going to be there supporting and helping, moving the dial faster. But at the end of the day, the principal takes that responsibility to drive that vision.
So I'm assuming that out of those teachers that are volunteering, is it safe to assume that they're like, you know, being receptive and it's making sense? They're being open about it? Is that safe to, to say?
It is the teachers that go and influence the other teachers for a teacher that is like Ms. Mercer. They influence other teachers. They say, this is really working. I see this data moving. It's not that I'm just giving, you know, grades for my students like that. They work hard. But I approach their mastery in a different way.
Perfect. Thank you so much. And so I'm assuming that this is one of our teachers that has been volunteering.
Ms. Mercer is from Arroyo Valley and she is one of the earlier doctors, I should say. And she has been, she, she'll speak to it.
Well, well, I just want to say before you do start, thank you to all those teachers over there listening for, you know, really being open and perceptive and receptive and willing, right? As it's mentioned, it's not mandatory. So when something is voluntary, right? It's really appreciated. And so I don't want to, I want to make sure that that is acknowledged and it doesn't go unnoticed. And Ms. Mercer is a great teacher, phenomenal. Just, just a little, a little, I'm glad to see you here today, by the way. My son was in your biology class and he didn't stay there very long, but we had an IEP meeting, I remember. So I didn't get to meet you or know you very much. But first impressions last a long time. And I just want to say thank you for that because you didn't know me at the time and you were very compassionate. Even afterwards, so thank you.
You're welcome. It was nice to chat with you. Okay, so to give you guys some context, I teach biology at Arroyo Valley High School and I've taught many different biology courses, but the majority, I've taught college prep, ninth grade biology and AP biology. So most of my time. And in the first decade of my teaching, I felt this sort of gnawing discomfort at the grades that my students were receiving. They weren't reflective of what my students actually knew. But I was just doing what I'd seen my whole life and what I'd experienced. And so I was seeing that compliant students were getting As in my classes, yet I knew that from our conversations and from different things they're doing in class, that their understanding of biology was pretty rudimentary. So there's a disconnect there. And then as a teacher, there was lots of frustration with students consistently asking, well, well, why, why don't I get half a point more on this question? And how come I lost those two points over there? And so the discussion was always on points as opposed to learning of biology. So then Doug Reeves came and there was the first cohort, we were offered the chance to join. And I said, I gotta go check this out because there's, there's got to be something different because what I'm doing isn't really working. And I had my two biggest takeaways from those sessions were that I began only grading for mastery. And what I mean is on the final grades in the grade book were the assignments and the projects and the labs and the tests that actually showed students mastery of the topic. Instead of grading all of the practice, those are those compliance pieces, right? And practice, you're supposed to make mistakes. That's how practice goes. So why was that going in my grade book for their final grades? So I, I switched my focus to those mastery assignments, giving the weight in the grade. And then the second thing I did was I changed all of my grading to a GPA-style grading. And so for my college prep biology classes, all of the assignments were zero to four. So that meant, you know, fours and A's, zeros would be an F, right? My AP biology classes, it was zero to five to reflect that extra point that they receive for those AP biology courses. And what I found immediately when I made the change was that my compliant, I'll call them assignment completer students, who were dutiful about filling in whatever the assignment was, but, but weren't learning anything, they no longer had As. And those who mastered the biology concepts and the biology skills, that's where my As were. And that felt much more reflective of what my students actually knew. And then the unexpected thing was my students stopped quibbling with me about individual points. I don't think I've had a question about points on an assignment in years. Instead, they ask, Mrs. Mercer, how do I raise my grade? And that opens the door for a conversation on mastery. And so we get to look at, okay, let's look at this lab, lab report that you submitted. What skills are you needing to work on, you know, in your evidence and your reasoning? We'd look at test scores, what standards were we not meeting the expectation? And so now my grades reflect their mastery and my grading conversations changed in the same vein. So now how do we master those standards and skills? It's been really cool. So thank you.
This is the change we wanted to see. This is exactly the innovative grading practice, what she, she said better than me.
Thank you, Mo. Thank you so much for sharing that.
You're welcome.
Now we would welcome our rock star principal, Dr. Raymundo.
Good evening and thank you. I'm going to stick to my notes because I could talk for like 30 minutes about this topic. But if Ms. Mercer would like a job with the Pirates, I will invite her readily. Several years ago, a student named Janay was on the basketball team. And she got very frustrated, she was being a teenager. Basketball was being dangled in front of her as a carrot for everything. Do your chores at home or you're off the team. You messed up at school, you got in trouble, you're going to be off the team. And she just basically shut down. And she, for three weeks, stopped doing any work at all. Nothing. Came to school, did nothing. Obviously, our team got alarmed and, and noticed that this was happening and we got her back on track. Then she came to me and said, I did everything my teachers told me to do. I did all the work that they said I could make up and yet I have Ds. I went to tutoring, I did everything and I still have Ds. And with all the zeros and late work penalty points that she got for those three weeks, that mathematical power in the grade book for those penalties was not enough to outweigh the As and Bs she was actually earning on all of her tests and assignments. So our educators have good intentions though. We want students to be responsible. We want them to know, if you mess up and don't do anything for three weeks, there's consequences to that. But many of our students, instead of seeing that as a carrot, they end up hopeless and frustrated and they give up. So points-based systems like Ares, when you use points instead of rubrics, they make it easy to see what a grade is. It's there in black and white. But with weighting categories and subjective numbers of points for various assignments, grades are more like a math puzzle than, than an actual measurement of learning. So if we can go to the next slide. Changing grading requires a whole paradigm shift, a different way of thinking about grading. And at times it feels a little bit like a mental cha-cha because you're going back and forth between, well, the research says this and I heard this at a, at a grading practices committee, but then I don't know how to make it work. And, you know, what do I do about the kid who didn't do the assignment? By using an action research model though, we can engage in the work by shifting our practices a little bit at a time and taking some of the research and applying it and seeing if it works. Just so I don't leave you hanging about Janay's story, after individual conversations with each of her teachers, all teachers agreed that yes, she got As and Bs for the entire semester instead of those three weeks. So they said they would make an exception for her and raise her grade. In 2017, Pacific formed a grading practices committee. And actually, we started with Dr. Reeves actually came to Pacific and spoke to my teachers. And about 40 of my teachers, so about half of my, my teaching staff actually came after school to hear from Dr. Reeves. And we started to ask questions like, why did we need to make an exception for Janay? What can we do to make our grading more fair, accurate and equitable for all students without having to make those exceptions? If you can go to the next slide. So this is just a little bit of our journey. We talked about, what do grades really mean? What are we communicating by our grades? We read articles, tons of articles, we, we reviewed research. Dr. Reeves came, I think, three times actually to my school and we did work with CLS for two years. We developed hypotheses to try out. If you ask my teachers, I'm always telling them, I hypothesize that I think this would happen if we did this, this might work. And they're like, I'm willing to try that because it's not like this is going to work. It's, let's try it and see what happens. Because we're working with students though, not theories, we built safety nets. So safety nets for the teachers, so they felt safe trying new things and safety nets for the students as well. And so if a new approach didn't work, they were keeping two grade books because Ares allows you to keep two grade books. You keep one visible to the students and parents and one on the side where you're trying some new things to see if it would work out. So we could always fall back to the old way if something didn't work, so that that way it didn't harm students or teachers. Our, our teachers also challenged the belief that students wouldn't work if you didn't give them points for everything. So, you know, we were giving students points for everything they put their name on. You put your name on an index card, you got points for it, you know. And they found actually that students kept working. The only students that didn't work were the ones that weren't working for the points already. And in fact, the grades went up, mastery went up and students were willing to do work and work harder and ask for just what the previous teacher said, that students are saying, how can I bring my grade up? Not, not asking for extra credits or points. We also applied redemptive grading practices and not only allow retakes and redos, we're pushy about retakes and redos. Soon as a student walks in the door, when are you retaking that test? You went to tutoring, we need you to redo this. So what about the students that don't do their work? Points or not, it doesn't matter, they're just not choosing to do work. We had to build supports and approaches to help those students who do opt out. We've built really intrusive levels of support, a term I learned from our partners at Valley College. We offer daily after-school tutoring, Saturday schools, about 28 Saturday schools a year. And tutoring and makeups during winter break and spring break. We don't just offer, we're annoying. We call, we remind, we send notices, we visit homes, we just bug. And when the kids don't show up during spring break and they have admentum to make up or grades to make up or tests to redo, we call them, as soon as 9:30, they're not there, where are you? You said you'd be here. These intrusive levels of support and grading focused on learning and mastery come together with our teacher clarity practices. Both teachers and students are clear about what students are learning and how they're going to demonstrate how they learned it. If you can go to the next slide. This is an example of one of my teachers' rubrics, actually our math department's rubrics, showing the zero to four grading for a specific standard and skill. So students can see exactly what they need to do to go from a one, which is a D, to a two, to a three, to a four. And we, sometimes people, we actually used action research to determine whether or not we put the zero on there. We're like, why would we put the zero? Zero is not, you shouldn't be earning a zero anyway. So we tested it. When we didn't put the zero there, the student that was reticent to try, kind of, no, I'm not going to do it. When we put the zero there and it said, you're making no reasonable attempt, okay, I'll, I'll do the D, I can do the D. At the same time, if we just put the four, especially in a course like calculus or trig, they would see that and go, I can't do that. But if we leveled it, they could see they could do it. When you bring in clear scales and rubrics, students can explain exactly what they need to do to level up to the next grade. And it really moved beyond compliance. Really, our goal has never been to reduce Ds and Fs. Our goal is to push beyond compliance and invest, have students invest and drive their own learning. We want them to want to learn and to want to grow. Going back to the last slide. So you can see, we were kind of stagnating at 65% C and better for a long time and we've been steadily making increases every single year. And when you look, a lot of the, the grades that are bringing us down are our ninth graders, so we have work to do. Our 10th, 11th and 12th graders usually actually bring that up even higher. But our work has led to real results. We have higher graduation rates, increased college and career readiness. You can see we're blue for both college and career and graduation rates. And more students are taking advantage of dual enrollment. Just this last fall, we had students pass 400 college courses with a 95% C and better rate for college courses. We still have much to learn in students who do sometimes opt out, but we continue to use that action research model and continue to collaboratively refine our practices to best serve them. Thank you for your time and the opportunity to share.
Thank you, Nadia.
Thank you so much.
I do want to impress upon the board that this is a principal who has been a principal at a middle school level and a high school level. And she learned the game and she is mastering it. But are, there are many principals that are very new. So it takes, you really have to be in this process and understand your teachers and, you know, how this system works. So it takes time with new principals and all of, many of her principals are just three years and below. I really want you to keep that in perspective. Thank you.
Could we move her from school to school? Just do the work that way. I'm kidding. I'm really not though. Is, is that the end of the?
That's it.
Okay, thank you. Thank you so much for coming out again and, you know, sharing the personal experiences at the sides, the principal and the teacher as well. Any comment, questions?
Staying up this late as well, thank you so much for being so patient. Amazing presentation, amazing. And the work, Ms. Raymundo, Dr. Raymundo, as well as the teachers, you, you are, are great. Both of you are great examples of what's really working within our school district. Thank you, Zuda.
Thank you so much and thank you to all your team as well. All right. 9.0 action items. 9.1 personnel report, number 12 dated February 4th, 2025, which contains actions such as hiring, retirements, resignations, promotions and terminations. Be it resolved, the Board of Education approves personnel report number 12 dated February 4th, 2025, as presented slash amended. I moved.
As presented.
Oh, sorry.
We're fast.
Vote please. Oh, it was Ms. Medina motioned and Mr. Tillman second.
Mrs. Grande, Mrs. Alexander?
Mrs. Alexander stepped away. Dr. Wyatt?
I stated aye.
I stated aye.
Motion carries. Nine point three, resolution, resolution accepting and acknowledging the language for funding applications submitted under the state school facility program and updating the five-year school facility master plan. I'm moved. Moved by Ms. Medina, second by Mr. Tillman.
Aye.
Thank you. Motion carries. Nine point four, resolution of district emergency Edison PSPS events, January twenty twenty-five. I'm moved. Moved by Ms. Medina, second by Mr. Tillman. Dr. Wyatt, vote, please.
Aye.
Motion carries. Nine point five approval of proposed increase in salary, all management personnel certificated and classified. I'm moved. Second. Moved by Ms. Alexander and second by Ms. Medina. Dr. Wyatt. Dr. Wyatt, sorry.
Aye.
Dr. Wyatt, for a vote for nine point five. Oh, aye.
Three times.
Motion carries. Nine point six, approval of proposed community workforce agreement. Oh, sorry, that one we already did. Ten point O consent items. Ten point one approve, approval of consent items. I'm moved. Second. Sorry, and before that, was there any items to pull? All right. I'm sorry, who made the motion? Ms. Medina made the motion, Ms. Felicia seconded. Ms. Alexander. Dr. Wyatt.
Aye.
Motion carries. Eleven point O reports comments by union organizations. Eleven point one, San Bernino Teachers Association.
No comment.
Eleven point two, California School Employees Association.
No comment.
Eleven point three, Communications Workers of America.
No comment.
Eleven point four, San Bernino School Police Officers Association.
No comment.
Twelve point O reports and comments. Twelve point one, board member comments. And I will go ahead and start with Ms. Grande.
Okay. Let me see. Yes, I just have one thing. I had another thing, but I sent it on to Dr. Rodriguez and Anna on that. Okay. I was really excited to go to the CSBA award ceremony yesterday. They brought the Golden Bell Award in for everyone to see, and they brought in the one that we earned for the special education department, which is near and dear to my heart, as you all know. And I was very pleased to see that we also had a table there of the teachers themselves who actually are responsible for the, helped create the Basics Three Curriculum Book. It's an incredible, one-of-a-kind Basics Three Curriculum for a moderate, severe, and even profound children. And it's wonderful because it was created by our own amazing teachers, speech therapists, APE, VI specialists, many others who created each page for this book with the five domains that we figured it was five domains. I won't go into them right now. But it was, first issue was in two thousand and two. And every, it's like a living document, so it's every so often they come together, the team there, the hard-working teachers, there's still some there from the original one. And I just was really happy to see it. And they showed a film there, but I think I've mentioned this to someone, I forget who, but I really would like to actually show the pages that are in there and the way it's written, because you can take a brand-new teacher in moderate severe and give her this book, and even if it's, no one tells her, you can do it. And I would like to see a video with that actually happening, where you can see the students and the teacher. It's just heartwarming, and I am very proud of that. It's also, it's very interesting because it was made available at Lake Shore School Supplies, and now it's in school districts all over our state. And I would like to know just which districts are using this and their locations, and I'd like to know what our current agreement is with Lake Shore. So I'd like to find that out. Sounds like a mystery to me. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Grande. Mr. Santos.
Thank you. I'm curious to know what our absence rate was this past Monday. If there's somehow I can.
Yeah, our attendance rate on Monday, we had seventy-eight percent of our students come to school.
And that, but that's still because of Monday, that's a lot lower than any typical day.
Correct.
And then my next is, what have we done to inform our frontline staff what to do and the possibility of ICE showing up to the the front door of our schools?
We can provide everything that we've done in the Friday update because it's a laundry list.
Great question. Mr. Tillman. Ms. Medina. Ms. Alexander.
Well, I would like to say thank you to all the students and their families who came out and participated in both parades, the Martin Luther King Parade and the Black History Parade, and thank you to the staff, everybody that just was a part of the whole process. Special shout-out to our communications team, Mary Ronan and her team did absolutely amazing job for just, you know, the coordination because it didn't just happen overnight, to making sure that what we saw on Martin Luther King Celebration, that was different for our Black History Parade. So really appreciate just all that was a part of that process. And then also the family engagement team, I think, was out there in great numbers, too. So just wanted to give a special shout-out. Also, wanted to give a special acknowledgement to Mr. Wing, who received an award from the Black Chamber. And then also the other people that received recognition, so let me give their names for the Black Culture Award, Lawrence Hardy and Principal Elizabeth Benoit, Benoit, and also Taylor Griffin, who is a student from Pacific High School. Just wanted to give them acknowledgement and congratulations. They received the Black Rose Award this past weekend. And then we also had, we had a lot going on last week, but I'm not sure if y'all know, we had Spelling Bee, our school district did. And for the young man who won, Mr. Keith Johnson, who I believe goes to Richardson Prep for winning. And then I had an opportunity to attend a workshop, A through G requirement workshop that was actually put on by the Family Engagement Office and also collaborated with the second ed education team with Dr. Kumi. But Mia Cooper put on a really good workshop focused on A through G requirements, helping middle school parents get prepared. And I thought it was great just to, you know, be able to give them that information so they can start preparing. But one of the areas that stood out the most to me was, I didn't know that if you wanted to, if you have students in a district and you want them to learn a second language, we can have them sign up for Rosetta Stone for free. So I thought that was a pretty interesting point and something to share. Also, jobs for California, there was an installation of officers at San Regonio. Ms. Vega and her students put on an excellent program, and I just wanted to give them special recognition for that. And I think lastly, I have a lot of other stuff, but lastly, the other item I want to talk about is field trips. I see we approve a lot of field trips, which I think is great. However, I was just wondering, is there a rubric that says for different, for primary and secondary, there are certain field trips that they go on? And then also, within that rubric, do we make sure that they're not duplicated, meaning for maybe the primary years and the secondary years, where at least there's a variety or some type of boilerplate for the teachers? And the only reason I'm asking is because I did receive some feedback that I guess they're duplicate field trips sometimes, and it doesn't make it exciting for the students, and it doesn't seem to always be in alignment with the curriculum. And that's it.
Thank you for that, Dr. Wyatt.
Thank you, Madam President. You know, I wanted to say thank you to our folks at Calm Days and K. Comnick and the rest of their team for, you know, working with us and assisting us with the CWA. There was a lot of work that was involved in that, and, you know, a lot of homework. And for us to explore what it was all about, legal questions as well. And so there was a lot of vetting, wasn't just a simple process where we brought it to the board for their review as well. So thank you to their team. As I mentioned earlier, we're up here in San Jose with our PIA groups, our Pacific Honor Advisory Committee, and just want to give a huge shout-out to our ETSA team and Dr. Greer and Assistant Lieutenant Anna Applegate for supporting PIA. And Francine Blackshear, who did an amazing job up here, as well as our parents and other staff, and just to our district for supporting PIA as well. And given us the opportunity to be up here at the Capitol annual conference, which is California Association of Asian and Pacifica Leaders in Education. It's created a huge movement, we're a big part of it, and got a lot of positive feedback in many districts coming to ask us how to do it themselves. So there's a lot of next steps that are going to happen, call to action, and then some plans for next year. Would love to see our students nominated to perform next year, and it'll be in San Diego, so we're super excited about that. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Wyatt. And for myself, just very briefly, again, Happy School Counselors Week, Black History Month, and National CTE Month that I wasn't aware of. So thank you for those reminders. I did want to add on, I had recently requested, it's funny that you mentioned it, because I had recently requested a list of all of the field trips that happened last year, just also to kind of get a better understanding on how those are, you know, how those happen and, you know, where did it come from, certain sites, are they, or certain sites going more on field trips than other sites, or, you know, certain departments, things like that. I wanted some information, so I think that should be coming up in a Friday update as I also want to say thank you, really to everybody that came out today again. Just thank you for, you know, sticking with us and, you know, being supportive and also collaborative. And I just really wanted to say thank you to Karen. Thank you so much, Karen, for all of the work and all of the extra notes that you have here for me. I really, really do appreciate it. It makes it so much easier for me as I'm learning this process, so thank you so much. Also, I wanted to, I just really wanted to ask maybe if we can have an answer sooner rather than later. I know that we're going to be working on the Governance Handbook, and there are certain things that we're going to be, you know, hashing out there and discussing and so forth. But if we can have some sort of response back, I don't know, maybe checking in with the attorneys on acceptable ways of agendizing items. I know that one way we do is getting consensus here at the board meeting, but when we don't have board meetings, like in between, you know, what is an appropriate way, lawful way, et cetera, to do that? And then, shoot, I forgot. Hold on one second. There's one more thing. Yeah, no, I forgot. It'll probably come back in a little bit. So I'm going to, I'm going to pass it on to Superintendent. If it comes back, I'll make mention of it. Thank you.
Thank you, President Sevales. Let me start just by thanking Suda and her team for the presentation today and really give kudos to Teacher Ms. Mercer and Principal Dr. Raymundo. They really are serving as excellent models to try to change the mindset of how we can truly push to have kids be successful. I was just sharing with President Sevales that when I was walking through, as a matter of fact, Arroyo Valley and Pacific recently, just in the last couple of weeks, I had noticed that four-point rubric. And at Pacific, all the teachers across the entire school are using it. That took time, but that took a lot of trust, vulnerability, honest conversation. So I do commend Dr. Raymundo and her staff. And I know Mrs. Mercer and several teachers at Arroyo Valley have adopted that approach, so it's, we're excited that that mindset is there. And I just want, you know, I know in the past, I've always said thanks to our school police for being here, our translator, and today I also want to throw props to Deshaun, man, who's done an excellent job keeping our DO clean, so thank you, sir. Appreciate you. So I just want to share some highlights, if I may. Want to thank Judy Penman, who is the Executive Director of the San Bernino Chamber of Commerce, who has restarted that city leadership development cohort. And so she asked if she could bring that leadership cohort, which is made up of different people in the city, to learn about the city and have them become leaders in the city. They wanted to come look at our CTE program, so they were at Pacific High School to see our transportation pathway and our biomedicine pathway. So I just wanted to thank Judy Penman for helping us show off the great things that are happening in this district. Next slide. And as was mentioned, we attended the Dr. King Service Awards this past week and want to congratulate Felicia Alexander for receiving the Ambassador Service Award for all the work that you've done. Brian Wing and the San Bernino Teen Music Workshop was also recognized, and the San Bernino City Unified School District was recognized for their partnership and work with them. So it was a great day. And Mr. Wallace, who is the Executive Director of the Black Chamber of Commerce, gave a great speech. I thought it was great, motivational, and just right on. So thank you for being, letting us to be a part of that. Next slide. And as was mentioned also, I was so very pleased to see our district involved in both the Dr. Martin Luther King Day Parade and the Black History Parade. This all stemmed last year when I was invited during my first year, where we were invited to go parade, and we went through the parade route. You might remember, there was maybe four or five people, maybe ten people on the parade route, and it just, it just didn't sit well. So I made a commitment that our schools would be involved in all of our parades within districts. So for the Martin Luther King Parade, you see there, we had four hundred kids in the parade. And the only reason we only have four hundred is we were limited. But then, next slide, the next parade, which happened this past Saturday, we had fourteen hundred kids. So as we said, as the district goes, the city goes. So from now on, the city and all the organizations have our full commitment to have our kids in the parades every day. So I just want to thank our principals, our teachers, our support staff, our parents, and our kids that showed up to really create that pride. And if you remember, our operational values and our multi-year vision both talk about developing pride within the district and developing pride within our community. So it was just a great, great two days. So thank you to everybody. And yes, I'm going to tag on the kudos to Mary Ron and your staff and Family Engagement and their staff for all of the work. And I know Business Services, School Police chipped in, so thank you guys all for making the community all come together. And I know Business Services, uh, School Police chipped in, so thank you guys all for making, uh, the community all come together. Next slide? And again, what was mentioned, we, we did attend the thirty-second Black Rose Award, so, uh, big, big congratulations to Lawrence Hardy, who does a great job generating, uh, community student, uh, community involvement and student involvement, uh, within our African-American community. And then, of course, Elizabeth Cochran Benoit has been just an outstanding educator and principal, so, uh, kudos to, uh, both of them for being recognized. Next slide? And then we continue to have royalty here in the, uh, San Bernardino City Unified School District, so Anna Applegate was, uh, recognized, will, will be recognized as GAVI Administrator of the Year, and of course, that is because of the impact that she's had, uh, in the world of bilingual education, not only when she was a teacher, as a principal, as a director, but now as an Assistant Superintendent, so it's gonna be great to be there, uh, at the GAVI Conference and cheer her on as she gets her award. So congratulations, Anna. Well-deserved, well-deserved. Next slide? I'll, I'll get you the information on that. Yeah, I want to give a special shout-out to San Andreas for, uh, being named a Model Continuation School. We just received that notice a couple, a couple of days ago, so at some point, we'll get an opportunity to, uh, uh, recognize, uh, Dory and, and her staff for all the work for being a Model Continuation School. And then on top of that, they just received their WASC, uh, review, which was glowing, uh, the highest level of accreditation. So congratulations to San Andreas High School, the staff, and all the work that they're doing. Next slide? And then Middle College High School participated in the debate, uh, competition just, uh, last week. And of course, Middle College High School took first place as the debate team. And then the two young ladies that you see there, uh, Alicia Rourke, who is on the left, who is a freshman, and, uh, Brisa Hernandez Garcia, who is an eleventh grader, won top speaker and second top speaker of the entire event. So, uh, congratulations to our, uh, team and kids at Middle, Middle College High School, who are helping our district, uh, shine. Next slide? And back on the San Andreas, uh, issue is, uh, Barbara Pastchek Cox and, and Ashley, they were all excited because, uh, they came running to my office with the CTA California Educators Magazine, and they did an article on CTE programs in the state of California, and they highlighted the hydroponic program at San Andreas. So it was really cool to see, uh, us in the magazine, uh, being highlighted, and that's just kudos to the school district and the principal and the teachers and everyone who had the vision to put that program together years ago. Uh, it's really being, uh, recognized across the state, so I wanted to share that with the board and the community, that, uh, another example of the district, uh, shining brightly. Next slide? Then I had the, uh, pleasure this past week to, uh, have my yearly meeting with the Ebony Triangle, um, which is, uh, made up of San Bernardino City Unified, Rialto Unified, and Fontana Unified. And within that Ebony Triangle, we've made, uh, some agreements, uh, to hold ourselves accountable on how we're gonna continue to develop the achievement of our African-American students and the involvement of our parents of our African-American students. So it was my opportunity to, uh, share a few things about how we're working towards academic success, Black history in the curriculum, college and career access, effective teachers and, and administrators in, in, in our school sites and grad rates. So, you know, I was able to highlight a few things. I won't go into everything, but just a few things. Shared with them, one of our goals being met, where we wanted to, uh, have, uh, more of our African-American students in our preschool seats than what we have proportionally have. So our goal was twenty percent. Uh, we have about nine to ten percent African-American students in our district, and, uh, Latasha and her staff have done a great job. We're at fifteen percent. So the Ebony Triangle was, uh, representatives were very excited that we have a goal, we've been meeting that goal, and we're continuing to work, uh, towards that twenty. I also was able to highlight the work that Dr. Funches and his team have done in HR in terms of recruiting African-American, um, uh, teachers in our classrooms and finding African-American educators to consider, uh, moving into, um, positions of school-site administration. So I know Dr. Funch has done a great job working with, uh, collaboration with Cal State, San Bernardino, as well as RCOE, uh, to try to help us, uh, get to those goals, so I appreciate that, and Ebony Triangle was very excited about that work. And, um, and then the last I just want to share is, uh, when we were talking about grad rates, uh, they were very happy to see the investment that the Board of Education and District have done, specifically at hiring, um, Equity Counselors at the high school. You heard today how we, uh, we've been very deliberate at looking at transcripts and analyzing transcripts, not only from the ninth grade, but tenth grade, eleventh grade, so that we know the roadmap for student success in terms of A through G, dual enrollment opportunities, et cetera. So, uh, I'll have an opportunity on April twenty-sixth at the Black Education, um, um, what do they call it, the Black Education Progress Meeting, uh, where I'll have an opportunity to go more into detail to share with the community, uh, the different aspects, so, uh, really excited about that opportunity. Next slide? And as we were saying, you know, we have people from all over the world coming to San Bernardino City Unified. We were, uh, happy to welcome and host, uh, some educators. Uh, they were, I believe, middle-school educators or high-school educators from South Korea, who had come to Cal State to really talk about, um, STEM opportunities, and in their conversations had heard about our outstanding CTE program. So on a whim, they asked to come visit, um, our manufacturing programs, our dental program at Cajon, so it was really nice to interact with them, and, uh, Suda, Anna, Alan Kay, Chelsea did a great job, uh, as well as the teacher at Indian Springs High School runs the manufacturing program. These guys were impressed at the level of investment that all of you have done over the years to provide kids probably better real-life experiences sometimes than in the real public se- in the sector, in the, in the work sector. So, uh, that was really nice to host the delegation from Korea, so, uh, that, another, another moment of our district shining. Next slide? And as was mentioned today, I wanted to formally highlight Keith Johnson, student Richardson Prep High, who is our official spelling bee champion, and he will continue on into the county competition. Correct, Mary Ron? So we're gonna be cheering on, uh, Keith, and, uh, and he, he will no doubt, uh, do well. And then my last slide, I just, I gotta give out a shout-out to a beautiful set of kids that I met when I was at Anton, uh, as I was visiting school. These kids come walking by, and I asked the principal, go, "Who are these kids?" And, "Well, this is the Beautification Club, Mr. Alan. They're trying to make sure that your schools look like the jewels of the community." So I asked the kids if I could take a picture with them so I could show it at the board meeting. So this is the Beautification Club at Anton Elementary, and I just want to thank the kids for having that pride and desire to keep our schools looking, uh, clean, and that's all I have tonight. Thank you.
Thank you so much, and I did remember my other two, uh, points that I wanted to bring up, so I'll mention them quickly. Um, if I, if we can get an update, um, with, uh, with the plan, outline with actual dates on moving forward with that Governance, um, Handbook, uh, that would be great. And then, yes, and the workshops, thank you. And then, um, also I wanted to make mention, um, are we supposed to be having a safety plan committee with our, with our district and district employees, as well as a cellphone committee coming up? Have we initiated any, anything like that, or?
Do you want to talk a little bit about the cellphone? Where we are with that process?
Yes, so we do have a plan that we have, um, started to work with in regards to the new legislation around the cellphones. And so, um, I can include it in the Friday update, but what we've been doing is selecting, we're working with the union to select a key personnel that will represent, uh, uh, teachers, counselors, special education, uh, personnel, just kind of a variety of folks that would have, be able to give us some input as far as, uh, when students may or might use them. Uh, we also included school police and CSOs because of, um, the, having to enforce that work, right? And then, uh, we also have admin that will be part of that as well. I can give you a detailed report of what that looks like, um, in the Friday update.
That would be great, and we have anticipated, like, dates to begin, like, we're just in the selection process now, and when is that expected to begin?
Our goal is to have it ready for your approval, uh, by the end of the school year, so that we can do our dry run at the beginning of the next school year for twenty-five, twenty-six, because it will be implemented in twenty-six.
Okay, so the committee work is gonna happen, like, here soon?
Happening now.
Okay, got it. Perfect. And then what about the, the safety plan? There is...
Eric, come and talk about. So you're talking about the yearly safety plans that are due to the CDE?
No, there was another language, and I left my, I left my notebook at home.
You might be referring to the Workplace Violence Prevention?
Yes, thank you.
Yeah, so we are working closely. We do have a plan in place. Uh, right now, we're working with SBTA and other union partners and Eric Bateer to put a series of meetings together to bring our teachers on board, so we can see how to continue the training piece. That's what we're working on right now. And so I can put that in the Friday update too, for you, so we can have, uh, more of a timeline.
Okay, perfect, so that we're in the identification process of who's gonna compose the committee?
Correct.
Okay, yeah, I would appreciate that. Thank you.
You are very welcome.
All right, moving to, um, thirteen point O, thirteen point one, review of requests.
Good evening. The first request is from President Sabios. She requested to know which sites are participating in the trainings and where these trainings are occurring, who are facilitating the trainings, and Ed Services will be providing more details via Friday update. Vice President Grande is requesting to know which districts are purchasing our Basics Curriculum Framework Handbook, and what is our contract look like with Lake Shore? Mrs. Alexander is asking if there is a rubric for primary and secondary on what field trips they can go on and where the field trips are not duplicated. And along those lines, President Sabios also wanted a list of all the field trips that occurred last year and how those happened, and which sites are going more than the other sites. Uh, she's looking forward to receiving the information via Friday update. President Sabios also is requesting a response back on agendizing items, specifically what is the appropriate way to agendize items, especially if there's no board meeting. President Sabios also would like an update on the plan or outline on the Governance Handbook, and that is it. Thank you.
And then, just to clarify, she answered where those meetings are happening, so the only, uh, portion that was left was, um, out of those three hundred and some teachers that are volunteering, where are they coming from? A fourteen point O meeting adjournment? Fourteen point one?
Moved.
Go have a second. Thank you. Moved by Mr. Tillman, second by Dr. Wyatt.
Have a good night.